We got a solution. Okay.
But I already fast.
See, you're sure. That's all.
That's all right.
Oh, or maybe you're. I said you're.
No.
So there's always three there. Okay. Okay. Oh, so Joe never we didn't get one from Joe. Well, actually, what that is.
I did. I understand.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Ashland Select Board meeting for March 6, 2024. This this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live by WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. Remote participation is available using the Zoom video conferencing platform. Any interruption with our video conferencing platform will result in the platform being shut down. Meetings will be continue to be broadcast on WACA TV and livestreamed on Facebook. So with that, is there anyone else recording this meeting that we should know about, just to make the public aware that they're being recorded? I'm seeing none. Okay. So with that, I will start with our agenda, which is public citizen participation and in line with our recent policy, we will limit each participant to three minutes. So do I have anybody for citizen participation? Yes, Cece, come up to the mic. Is there anyone else either here or online? Could you raise your hand using the raise hand function?
Mark does a scan.
There he does. Okay. So he does. Okay, go ahead, Cece.
Hi, Cece Doucette, Fatima Drive. Thank you again for helping to tune in to the biological risks of today's wireless technology. Two meetings ago, I loaned you all a radio frequency detection meter, and I wondered if I could see a show of hands as to who actually took that home or used it in some capacity.
I did not get to take it home. It was.
Where is it now? Do we know?
I think it went.
Yeah. So no.
I was on vacation last week.
Okay, so nobody took advantage of that, is my understanding.
I think.
Okay. May I bring it back next time? Because seeing is believing, this is an invisible toxin of radio frequency microwave radiation that we're exposing especially our children to in all of our schools.
All right, if you bring it back, Cece, I'll attempt to take it home.
Thank you. And then, thank you, I see that you've returned the.
I have I have a confession. I left mine at home, so I will make arrangements with you to return it.
That's fine. Can I see a show of hands if the others actually looked at the New Hampshire Commission report?
I looked through it, but not in, you know, not in detail, unfortunately.
Okay, so basically, nobody has looked at it. The reason why this is important is the Massachusetts Joint Committee on Consumer Protection has advanced a bill out of committee favorably to do what New Hampshire did, and that's to investigate the wireless radiation issue. And when you look at that report, you'll see that one of their recommendations is to get wireless technology out of our schools. It is a neurotoxin. It causes all sorts of biological effects, and most people simply have no idea because the wireless industry and our mainstream media have major conflicts of interest, so you only get their benefits of wireless technology. And we don't want to take anybody's toys away. All you have to do is run an ethernet cable with an adapter. You will have safe technology that's much faster, far more reliable. All of the data and privacy concerns are far better protected with a wireless connection. So again, my ask is that we continue to learn together, and Rob, you suggested at an earlier meeting that maybe a first step is to do a formal presentation to you guys so we can teach you live and then give you the resources to go do your own deep dive.
All right. I'll take that under. I think that some part of the discussion was how to do something like that and have all scientific sides represented.
Yeah, and by all means.
One of the things we're wrestling.
Bring the industry, invite them. In past experiences, they don't come to the table.
Mm-hmm.
So invite them, and let's just go for it. And we have other experts we can bring in as well. Dr. Kent Chamberlain is the Chair Emeritus of the University of New Hampshire's Computer and Electrical Engineering. He would be here with me in a heartbeat.
All right. Well, thank you, Cece. So we'll think about that.
Okay. So what I'm going to leave you with tonight is the bill that has been advanced out of committee, but we can't wait for higher authorities. We've had bills for 10 years in Massachusetts, and meanwhile, we've just built a beautiful school and put a wireless access point in the ceiling of every classroom in Mendez.
What's the bill number? That way you don't have to give us the paper, and we can just go find it online.
The bill number is Senate Resolve 155, and it is called Resolve.
Is there one from the House as well, or is it just from the Senate?
No, this one's from the Senate. And there's another one out there on smart meters.
Okay.
That's Senate 2152, and we're waiting to see whether that will come out.
Thanks, Cece. I think we've gone over our three minutes, so I appreciate your motive.
Again, I do free public education webinars every month. I'll leave you each with a copy, and seriously, I hope you'll join us because we could be helping our kids today.
Okay, thanks, Cece.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Cece.
Right. Mark.
Okay.
Do you want to unmute yourself and go ahead, Mark?
I think somebody already did. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
You need to increase your volume a little, Mark.
Increase the volume. How's that?
There you go. Now we can hear you.
Okay. Good evening, Max 249 Hawthorne Road. And Cece introduced me to what she had up there, and I'm going to just say quickly that even though you're saying you will look at it, you will see it, half the board didn't take the meter home and stuff like that, it's a serious problem that's going to need serious taking, and the select bill, the state House bill, it's an important read.
Yeah, I think so.
That's basically what they are. They thought I'm on her side still, and she's doing a great job getting it, and if you don't keep up with her, she's going to put the town behind. Okay. Max 249 Hawthorne Road asked the town manager, how'd the election go yesterday?
It went very, very smoothly. Cindy and her team, including Chris Sullivan and Jean Delucery and all the poll workers, they did a marvelous job.
Well, I tried looking up on the town website, it said unofficial results, and I tried to look up on it, and it didn't give any any vote numbers.
Yeah. It should be fixed by now, Mark. We did have some technical difficulties, but that should be good.
Can you say out loud now what could have been?
I'm sorry, can you say that again, Mark? Oh.
I think she said that's 13%.
Yeah. Are you asking the percentage?
I'm asking each precinct and the percentage of Ashland's voters that came out.
Yeah, I don't have that, Mark. I can get that to you, though.
What about 13?
On our.
Total was about 13.
Mark, on my way in, I asked, and it was about 13% turnout. That included the mail-ins as well as the people who showed up at the ballot.
And we, the whole state was Biden and Trump, and how was the town for that?
Mark, I'll have to pull it up for the exact, exact answers.
Okay, you can do that. You have my email, right?
I do have your email. I think I've got a couple emails for you.
It's all up there now.
Yeah. Yeah, it should be, it should all be up there by now, Mark, on the website, so you should have all of your, all of your answers. But we'll send it to you as well. How's that?
Appreciate that. And I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Anyone else for citizen participation? I don't see any. Okay, so we have about six minutes before we start the dangerous dog hearing, or resume it, I should say. Is there suggestion to do the consent agenda?
Yes, yeah. I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? All right, so motion's been made and seconded to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Okay, the consent agenda has been passed.
Nice to welcome Max Performance back for their triathlon.
Oh, yeah, what's that?
Want to go through the reminders?
Oh, yeah, that's a good idea. Well, you have a few minutes, we'll do the reminders, if that's okay with everyone. So the Select Board grant cycle is open, and submissions are due by March 31st. Nomination papers are available in Town Clerk's office. Does anybody know offhand how long they're available and when they're all due?
I believe they're due by April 2nd. April 2nd.
Is when they're due.
Is when they're due.
Okay.
So you need enough time to.
Yep.
Get them filled out before then.
Right. And free COVID tests are available at Town Hall, and our wonderful volunteer breakfast has been scheduled for Saturday, March 23rd, at 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the community center. And Susan, is there anything you want to update us on the response, or I know there's, you've been sending out the invitations. How's it looking?
So I called in head count on Monday. We have about 60 people in attendance. We didn't get everybody to respond back, but I'm hoping that 160 is a good number. Yolanda's going to take care of opening the building, and anyone that shows up and helps her set up tables, I'm sure she will appreciate that.
All right, and what time? Nine, so what time should we show up?
I would say 8:15, 8:30.
Okay.
That we can get the tables set up and tablecloths and stuff down.
All right. And Yard Waste Collection begins Monday, April 1st, and continues until Monday, June 3rd. No, no collection on April 15th, which is Patriots' Day, right, or May 27th, which I guess is Labor Day, right?
Memorial Day.
Sorry.
Jumping ahead just a few months.
I'm moving ahead a few months. Okay.
Time's moving too fast. Don't do that, please.
So.
If you read the hearing notice.
Yeah. Why don't I do that? So I'm, I'm going to, given that we have a few extra minutes for the dangerous dog hearing, you'll recall that we continued this from our February 7th meeting, so I'm just going to reread the notice that went out, and that's this letter, correct, to the Roscoms. Yeah. So this is, Ashland Select Board will conduct a hearing which will be held in person and via Zoom. The meeting will take place at Ashland Town Hall. If you wish to attend virtually, use the Zoom link. The hearing is held pursuant to General Law Chapter 140, Section 157, and Section 87-16, the town's general bylaws to determine whether, and this is addressed to the Roscoms, determine whether your dog identified as Cooper, an American Bulldog, is a dangerous dog as defined by General Law Chapter 140, Section 136A. In the event that the board finds Cooper to be a dangerous dog, it will also determine what measures are to be taken to protect the public in accordance with General Law Chapter 140, 157C. And just a reminder, these measures, these include a number of measures, including euthanasia, but also a number of other protective measures that could be taken. So I'm not going to reread everything I read at the last one, but I think, given the time, I will declare that we are reopening the dog hearing that's suspended at the February 7th meeting to make a determination on if Cooper shall be deemed a dangerous dog based on the incident that occurred on January 13th, and any measures the board wishes to take regarding that. So anyone speaking or testifying in this matter must be sworn in. I'll be asking you to do that shortly. I also, we will go in order of Animal Control Officer Donna Walsh will give a presentation, and then would be Kelly and Peter Lacasse, or anyone present during the attack on Lincoln will be given the opportunity to speak. And then we will speak with the Roscoms if they are here and are, if they're, if they have an attorney. Are the Roscoms here? Okay, great. Okay, thank you. And I'm advised that you or, do you have an attorney, or is it just you folks? Okay. So you will have, you have the opportunity, my understanding, to ask questions of anyone speaking, right, and to, oh, this, I should introduce, this is our Town Council, Steve Chaplin, who's going to make sure we do everything legally and is here to advise us, so.
That's the goal, anyway.
All right. All right, thank you. So I believe I also have to, at least, I should at least generally list the documents that we're going to be presenting here today.
Yes, we should list the documents and give a brief description of each, perhaps just the date and the title.
Yeah. So I have in front of me the, a copy of the dog license from the city of Framingham.
We need a motion to open the hearing.
Or reopen the hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, let's.
Yep.
Do I have a motion to reopen the hearing?
Yep, motion made.
I'll second.
Okay.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor reopening the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so I was thinking about the list of documents. So I will list the, I will talk about the list of documents. So I have a city of Framingham dog license, a number of violations supplied by the Animal Control Officer, Donna Walsh, Donna's recommendation to the Select Board, and the, some other matters that we have, oh, the, an assessment of Cooper, which I'm not sure everyone's got, we just got this recently. The, there's a letter from the Lacasses about the incident, and let's see what else I had in my little pile here. Violations, is that about, is there anything else? We have the incident report from Donna Walsh, her recommendations, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 violation notices, which I believe she describes, and the letter from Kelly and Peter Lacasse. Is that a, have we received any other written or other documents that anyone's aware of? Oh, I'm sorry, and the photographs of the dog Lincoln and the injuries that Lincoln sustained. Okay.
Mike Kane and Tim King and Mary Go-Braverton, if you know them all.
That was for people who couldn't hear. It was pointed out that we received letters from some folks, and we're not sure we have them.
Does Susan have them?
Were they emailed before the last hearing?
It might have been before the.
Yeah.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Since it is an evidentiary proceeding, if those people are here to testify, I don't know that the absence of the documents would materially affect the proceedings.
Okay. All right. So let me, so who is, who is considering testifying today? If you could just stand and raise your right hand, or if you're on. Okay.
Do you want Steve to swear a minute?
Sure, yeah, go ahead.
If there's anybody on Zoom, they need to put their camera on.
You want to check.
Is anybody on Zoom? I see Michael, Mike's on there. Tricia, if you guys just show yourselves if you can and raise your right hand.
If you're here to.
If you, if you want to say anything.
Right. If you're going to give testimony on the dog hearing, it could be the other Mike Kane.
That's your, that's your mic? Okay.
I'm not going to be saying anything during any meeting. Thank you.
Okay.
And Michael, we'll take your word for it if you raise your right, if you want to speak. All right, Mike's not saying anything. Okay, go ahead.
Do you all solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matter now in hearing? Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so we're going to ask our Animal Control Officer, Donna Walsh, to come up to the microphone. And just a note for you folks that are here in person, you really need to come up to the microphone and speak into the microphone so everyone can hear you. So go ahead, Donna.
Donna Walsh, Animal Control Officer for the town of Ashland. So on January 13th, I was called to Full Woodland Road for a dog bite. The police were dispatched as well. Lieutenant Briggs and Officer Murray were on scene upon my arrival. They explained there were three dogs living next door that broke out of the fenced area, and the dog Cooper attacked a silver lab named Lincoln. They described the bite wound as severe. The injured dog and dog owner had left the scene to rush the dog to an emergency care facility. That dog spent several days, a good part of a week, in emergency care, if I'm not mistaken.
It was in and out.
In and out.
And then every.
Kelly, just keep in mind that people can't hear you that are remote.
So anyway, the dog spent several days during a week's time in an emergency care facility to take care of the wounds. I spoke to both Claire and Chris Roscom, and at that time, I found that the dog had not been vaccinated for rabies or licensed. I told them that they needed to take care of that. I issued citations for failure to license. I issued another one to restrain and muzzle at all times. I issued, I have them here, I can probably go back and look at them, but several, anyway. So that we had all of the, you know, the citations in order that we needed. Failure to vaccinate, failure to license, complaint of nuisance, so those are the citations that we issued, and a quarantine order. I later found, after talking to Mary Beth, that also Quinn was also involved in the attack, so it was more than one dog. During that week, Quinn was euthanized for her part in the attack, that dog belonging to Chris Roscom. He felt that was the best, the right thing to do, considering the severity. Cooper is now living in Framingham with Claire and her boyfriend and your parents, I believe? Yes. So they live in a close neighborhood, the houses are close together, so it's a concern about what we do.
Okay.
Even though the dog is not.
Yeah, I'm sorry, sorry to interrupt you. Procedurally, is it best for us to ask questions of each witness as they testify, like if, rather than waiting for everybody to be done, and I'm also looking at the board, is that what people prefer, like we'll ask questions of Donna?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, no hard and fast rule in your meeting.
Sure. Go ahead, Donna.
So even though the dog is not, no longer living in the town of Ashland, it is a concern that at any time, that dog could come back here, go to our future dog park that's coming up, anywhere, go to visit somebody, and there's no restriction if we don't.
Put restrictions on it.
Put a restriction on it.
And is there any, so this has come up, is there any kind of legal issues with the dog living in Framingham and us issuing orders that.
No.
Control in Framingham?
No, it's good throughout the state. Anything, any decision is good throughout the state.
That's correct, says that in the statute.
Okay, great. I interrupted Donna.
And then is each, is each city or community, is it their responsibility to enforce any decisions that we make? Is that how it works?
Correct. Correct. That gives them the ability to enforce anything that we deem necessary to keep the dog safe from the public and from other animals. It wouldn't be our job to go to Framingham and enforce it, that would be Framingham's job.
And the statute, is that a state statute, so that.
Yeah.
It would be the same remedies there as here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. It's the law throughout the state, generalized, Chapter 140, Section 157, falls under licensing, like liquor licensing.
Donna, do you have, you're going to talk about your recommendations as well at this point?
Sure, I can do that.
Or is there anything else you wanted to add?
So the recommendation that we have, I spoke to Framingham's Animal Control Officer, and we came up with recommendations to, that are, all that are allowed in the dangerous dog. One would be that Cooper may not be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. That just kind of falls under the tethering law.
General, yeah.
To make sure that the dog isn't left out there for, you know, an unlimited amount of time. That the dog Cooper be confined to premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed locked pen or dog run area upon premises of the owner or keeper. And within the confines of such pen or dog run, such pen or dog run shall have secure roof, and if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. A dog house or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Three, the dog, that the dog Cooper shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or a tethering device, having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length while being walked outside. That the dog Cooper shall be securely and humanely muzzled when outdoors. That as a dangerous dog, Cooper, that as a dangerous dog, Cooper shall not permit a child under the age of 17, excuse me, to own, possess, or have the care or custody of such That the owner, Claire Roscom, or keeper of the dog Cooper, shall provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000, ensuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury. That gives them the ability to enforce anything that we deem necessary to keep the dog safe from the public and from other animals. It wouldn't be our job to go to Framingham and enforce it, that would be Framingham's job.
And is the statute, is that a state statute so that.
Yeah.
It would be the same remedies there as here?
Yes.
Yeah, that's right. It's the law throughout the state, generalized, Chapter 140, Section 157, falls under licensing, like liquor licensing.
Donna, do you have, you're going to talk about your recommendations as well?
Sure, I can do that.
At this point, or is there anything else you wanted to add?
So the recommendation that we have, I spoke to Framingham's Animal Control Officer and we came up with recommendations to, that are, all that are allowed in the dangerous dog. One would be that Cooper may not be chained, tethered, or otherwise tied to an inanimate object, including but not limited to a tree, post, or building. That just kind of falls under the tethering law.
General, yeah.
To make sure that the dog isn't left out there for, you know, an unlimited amount of time. That the dog Cooper be confined to premises of the keeper of the dog, provided however that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed locked pen or dog run area upon premises of the owner or keeper. And within the confines of such pen or dog run, such pen or dog run shall have secure roof and if such enclosure has no floor secured to the sides thereof, sides shall be embedded into the ground for not less than two feet. A dog house or proper shelter from the elements shall be provided to protect the dog. Three, the dog, that the dog Cooper shall be securely and humanely restrained with a chain or a tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of 300 pounds and not exceeding three feet in length while being walked outside. That the dog Cooper shall be securely and humanely muzzled when outdoors. Excuse me. That as a dangerous dog, Cooper, you, that as a dangerous dog, Cooper shall not permit a child under the age of 17, excuse me, to own, possess, or have the care or custody of such dog. That the owner Claire Roscom or keeper of the dog Cooper shall provide proof of insurance in an amount not less than $100,000 insuring the owner or keeper against any claim, loss, damage, or injury to persons, domestic animals, or property resulting from the acts, whether intentional or unintentional, of the dog or proof that reasonable efforts were made to obtain such insurance. If a policy has not been issued, provided however, that if the policy, if, if a policy of insurance has been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce such policy upon request of the hearing authority or a justice of the district court and provided further that if a policy has not been issued, the owner or keeper shall produce proof of efforts to obtain such insurance. And that the dog Cooper or keeper of the dog Claire Roscom microchip the dog Cooper for permanent identification and provide information to the Animal Control Officer of, which should be the town that the dog resides. In lieu of the listed restrictions, the other alternative would be to humanely euthanize the dog.
And Donna, you don't make any specific recommendation as to.
Excuse me.
Do you, do you want some water? You want to take a break?
I'll be okay.
Get some water? But you don't make a specific recommendation for euthanizing the dog?
No, I didn't.
You just put it as a possibility?
Right. It's a, as a possibility.
But if we, if we don't do that, then there's all these, okay.
Right.
Any other questions or for Officer Walsh?
I just have a question in terms of whatever, you know, remedy or remedy, but it's a word here. Whatever stipulations we place on, on the dog here. How does that follow the dog? Is there, is there, you know, do you all have a list where there shows dangerous dogs or, or some kind of, so if the dog were to move from one community to another?
Right. Well, by law, well, I don't know if it's by law, but we would, like if we have a dog that we've deemed dangerous here and it moves to another town, I believe it is part of the law that we're supposed to notify. Excuse me.
I was going to say, do you have more information?
So the statute's not that specific. I will say in practice, police departments do cooperate and share information and, you know, dangerous dog situations are not unlike that. Can go both ways. If one community knows that they've made an order and the dog's going someplace else, they might notify that community. If the community gets wind of, there's a dog in town, they might do a little bit of homework on where that dog came from and reach out to the community that made the order and ask for a copy.
So as a, as the dog officer or the animal control officer, Donna, do you have a list of any animals that have been deemed either dangerous or, you know, anything else? Do you, do you have such a list that you?
We don't have a list, but we know what dogs we have that have been deemed dangerous, yes.
Interesting.
Okay.
Well, and there is some kind of record of it because we had a family here in town who, they were going to be foster family and their dog had been deemed dangerous and they had to come before us to change the.
Forgotten, yeah.
Notification of the, of the, the status of the dog so they could become a foster family.
And that was out from another town.
Yeah, it just seems to me like there should be something formal, right? That there should be something, I mean nowadays, right?
Probably not our computers.
Well, there's records.
Yeah, there's records, so.
There's a paper trail.
Because you, you don't want to think that if there are that, these heightened concerns that no matter where the dog went.
Right.
That someone, people would be aware, right?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. If there's, and we can call Donna back if we, if other questions come up. So Donna, if, thank you and stay and get some water. Okay, I think Jen's getting you some. Right. So I think next I'll call, ask Kelly and Peter Lacasse if they care to come up and, you can come up both together if you like and we have your letter from dated Wednesday, January 17th to us.
I'm not sure that I have a lot to add to what I wrote in my letter. I will say that I am so sorry for the situation that you guys are in. They've been super cooperative. I know Claire's working really hard to, to train Cooper and to have him change his way. I, in my heart of hearts, don't believe that can happen. I saw his face. The attack was completely unprovoked. The, the dog was walking through the yard. The other three dogs came like shoom, 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 out from under their fence. It was so fast and they circled once around and Cooper just latched onto his back and Quinn followed. And Chris, I'm sorry that you put Quinn down. I know this is really hard for everybody. I can't imagine, I can't imagine we had to put a dog down. But I will say if my dog did this to another dog, he would not be here today. I love my dog and I know that Claire loves her dog too, but I have to have it on record that I believe in my heart that all you're putting your dog through right now is all well-intended, but I don't believe that he can be reformed and I honestly feel that it will happen again. And I want it on record that it's not going to be because I didn't put up a fight to have that dog euthanized. I know that breaks people's hearts and it seems like a mean thing to say, but if you saw what happened that day, you would probably think the same. Mary Beth can speak for herself, but I was screaming and she dove in like she was jumping into third base and tried to grab those dogs and she could not pull them off my dog. And my two brothers, Tim Kane and Mike Kane, were kicking that dog in the head and he would not release his latch on him. And his face was cruel, mean. I, I, I can't think of a word for it, but it was traumatizing and I am so sorry. I know this is hurting Claire a lot. Anyway, I, I don't believe he can be restrained. And I also think that muzzling a dog and keeping him on a leash for the rest of his life is inhumane. And I don't believe that, like a sex offender, unless you register the dog in the town you moved to, nobody's going to know he's there. I don't believe that's going to get followed up on. So I pray it's not another child if it happens again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for them? I guess we'll. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to speak on behalf of the complaints? Anybody remotely or here? And then go ahead, Mary Beth.
Hi.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, can you hear me? I'm sorry. I'm, I'm at the airport. I'm traveling, so I'm not prepared to speak tonight. I'll get back what Kelly said, that I was there that afternoon and it was horrifying to see. I have never, and sorry Claire, again, like Kelly said, I have never kicked anything so hard in my life. That dog was not releasing. But other than that, everything Kelly said is accurate and clear. And I've got nothing further because I don't have my notes with me. I'm, I'm about to get on a plane, so I apologize for that.
That's all right. Thank you, Mike, Michael. Anyone else? Mary Beth, did you want to?
So I also don't have much more to say than my sister. And I feel horrible. Claire, I can't even look at you because I'm feeling horrible about the whole thing and for your dad too. They're good neighbors. But I was beyond traumatized. I did dive in and I did grab both them by their collars and stayed on the ground till my brothers came and did what they needed to do. But they weren't letting go of Lincoln. And to see my sister screaming and to hear the dog crying will stay with me forever. I feel traumatized. I'm not comfortable still letting my dog out. We have a big fenced-in area for my dog. I am grateful that my sister's, I mean, I'm grateful that my dog, my brother Tim's dog and my brother Mike's dog were already back in their cars heading, getting ready to go home and my dog was back in my house. Because if it was five minutes earlier, they would be dead. They would not have survived that. Lincoln's a big dog and that's how Lincoln survived that. I love dogs and I have put my dogs down when they were sick and I never want to see people have to put their dogs down. But the only thing I can keep thinking of is I can't imagine Cooper's life being led the way Donna just described. He would have to live his life and that's no way for a dog to live. And I am sorry. I really am sorry. And thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Okay, anyone else?
I just have three seconds where.
Sure.
Actually, the, this injury occurred between mine and Mary Beth's home. We live next door to each other. And the only thing I have to add to that is if the police, the two policemen had arrived two minutes earlier, Cooper would have been dead.
Okay, thank you. So I understand the Roscoms are here. Or Claire, do you want to come up and make a statement? Talk to us a little bit?
You guys kind of know everything that happened. I felt really awful for a very long time and I still feel really awful for everything that happened. I've been trying as quick as I can, as we can, to pay back their family for the money that they had to spend bringing Lincoln to the vet. My dog has never done something like this before and it kind of confused us all. He lives with two dogs. My boyfriend's family has a dog as well and he gets along with all of them. We would bring him out all the time and I, it was almost as shocking to me as I guessed them because they were actually outside. I was inside. I was in the shower. I heard my dogs barking. I had gotten out of the shower. I'm in my towel and I look out the window and I see that they had a dog that I've never seen before that was kind of near our fence, but on their, in their yard. And my dogs were just barking and I tried to, in that moment, I'm watching and I start putting my clothes on and I just see the fence break. Cooper jumped on the fence and broke it, one of the wooden panels. And I couldn't even move fast enough. I just went outside and I called for my dad. He was napping. It was Saturday. And he got out there before I did. I was still getting dressed and, oh my God, she was trying to separate the dogs and by the time I physically got over there, she had done it. She separated them and we were trying to bring our dogs back inside. That day, I emailed 10 places, even a behavioral therapist in Boston, just to see what is going to be best for him. I got two physical opinions, two physical content consultations on Cooper who both believe that he can be fixed and that they think that they can work with him and that he lacked basic training, like sit. And because of that, his mind was just stupid essentially. And I just believe that my dog deserves a chance at life to get better. And I guess that's all I really have to say, other than I'm trying everything I can to help them in every way, but there's really nothing I can do because it was traumatic. But I do believe that my dog deserves a chance at life. One more piece I wanted to add as well is when my dog, when my dad took his dog to be euthanized, he did actually take both dogs to be euthanized. Donna helped him schedule that. And when my boyfriend found out, he actually called the hospital to find where he was because we didn't consent to that. I, I believe that if it's up to anybody, it's up to you guys. But that's all I have to say and thank you for your time and I'm sorry that any of us have to be here today.
Yeah, hold on, I think, why don't you stay? Is Richard here as well?
He's right there. He wasn't.
Was he involved at all there or?
He wasn't there that day, no.
Okay. So one thing, we received this Claire, this Boston doctor, are you prepared to speak about this?
I also brought just a few, I don't know if you have anything else, but I brought receipts. We went to Home Depot the next day and bought a ton of fencing equipment to get started immediately. We actually got a panel in, but it started snowing that week.
Well, Cooper's in Framingham, he's no, he's in Framingham under some sort of restraint, right?
Yeah, no, we have to.
Not at your home.
Well, no, right now he's in Southborough.
Oh, right.
There. But when he was with us, he was in Framingham.
I don't know if it makes sense to summarize what we have. Has everyone else seen this?
Yeah.
Have you folks aware of this? So I don't know, I guess it makes sense for me to kind of summarize this evaluation or assessment. Sure, sure. Who is this person that's, this is Georg O and this is an organization called Boston Dog, Dog, Dog Tour?
Yeah, he's, he has a license, he's licensed, I, he's insured, he has a three-year guarantee on Cooper that if anything were to ever happen, he'll take him back and retrain him.
So he's, Cooper's with him now being trained and he is, he's, is this, he's saying that this is an assessment of Cooper? So I don't, is there anything you care to say about this? Do, I mean, is he making some sort of commitments or representations that there's going to be particular results with Cooper? Is that?
Yeah, I, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it does say on there that, that so far he's doing very well and getting along with all of the other dogs there and he believes Cooper's making great progress and that he's going to be a new dog when he gets home.
So could I ask a question on this?
Please.
I think this is great that you're doing this. This is always, dog, dog hearings are always the hardest and certainly many of us have been or still are dog owners, so we understand. In regards to this, it talks about how Richard will be trained to work with the dog?
Yeah.
Will you, you will both be trained to work with the dog if we, okay.
He's just been kind of the main contact.
The contact.
With the guy, so, yeah.
Okay, okay. I mean, and then I did have other, another question. You said this is the first time that you've seen this behavior in Cooper?
Yeah. He, there was, he has been attacked at a dog park before. I used to take him to dog parks all the time, but he actually, a dog attacked him.
So he had been attacked.
Yeah.
Previously.
Yes.
How, how long ago?
A year and a half ago.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't taken him to dog parks since.
And you haven't taken him to a dog park since then?
No.
Well, that can certainly indicate, right? If a dog has been attacked, it makes him a little more likely to.
Totally.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now.
Okay.
Other questions for Claire or about this present, this material?
Yeah, I guess I have a couple of questions.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, I wondered what the data for success is for this company and what sort of, you know, I did go online and try to review all the reviews on the business and they were all very positive, but there wasn't a lot of detail in terms of what sort of dogs he had, you know, it seemed like there was a big range. Sometimes it was just sort of your typical training and sometimes it was something much more significant type of training like in this case would be. So I kind of wondered about, you know, what sort of data that this individual would have about the types of dogs that he's had success with and what, what the long-range time, you know, what did it look like three years out? Or, I mean, he does talk about three years and, and what sorts of, I, I just felt like I needed more information from him.
Um, can I just ask you a quick question? Didn't you tell me that?
Sure, Donna, if you say, feel free to go up to the mic or Richard or Donna, whoever. She has.
I wasn't there on the day, so I was like. That's okay. It's, this is not regarding the day now. This is regarding this program and the, and its success.
I just, didn't you tell me that he actually knew Donna at all?
Yeah.
And that you guys kind of worked together sometimes?
Um, yeah. His name is like very hard to pronounce. It's on the back.
Gevorg. G E V O R G.
He says like, he does like some volunteer work with you.
In Southborough.
Boston Dog, D O G T O R.
It's Sudbury. Some volunteer work there, maybe.
But anyway, you had a friend whose dog, I believe, got trained by him and he recommended him to us. I had visited, he came to our house to see Cooper and before that I had brought in Cooper. I forget the name of the town, but up near Lawrence, to check out another training facility. And we were going to go with that one until he found this guy. I liked how he came to our house. I like how he doesn't use any sort of, like, intense therapy, like shock collars. He does... He monitors the dogs with close social interaction to safely reintroduce Cooper to dogs and kind of see what his triggers are and what is going on in his head, so that he can show him that it's okay. It's a two-month program, so it's not just like two weeks. He actually stays, and then we have to go there, and then he comes to our house, and he shows us everything in all different sorts of ways. But I just felt really confident and comfortable with... He has seven dogs of his own. His dog hopped out of the car, and he said, "Pee," and his dog peed on the floor. It's just, I'm not saying that that guarantees anything aggression-wise, because my dog has a problem, clearly. But he specializes in aggression training. I believe he has college degrees in dog science or animal science, and he does have several licenses that I should have brought them with me today. I'm sorry I didn't. But I do believe that they're public record, if we did want to look them up at all.
Just to... So, your intention is to have Cooper finish this eight-week training program, and then what?
Come back to live with us in Framingham.
And did you... Are you aware of the recommendations at the dog officers in Framingham? And you're aware of the recommendations that Donna's made?
Yes.
And those...
So, I'm just... So, was your dog visiting Ashland? So, your dog was visiting?
My dog lives there. Her dog was visiting. She... Lincoln doesn't live in Ashland. Lincoln lives in...
No, but your dog is now in Framingham.
My dog's in Framingham.
Well, except when they're at this... Okay.
Yeah.
And then, your dog is going to go back to Framingham? Sir, if you want to say something...
I can kind of clear that up.
If you could come to the microphone, then...
Yeah, just identify yourself.
And how old is Cooper?
Four.
Four.
So, but Cooper's... You're going to have a secure... You listened to Donna's recommendation, and...
Yeah.
You're going to... Your intention would be to have Cooper go to Framingham with those kinds of conditions? Should we discuss that?
Yeah, as of now, until we figure out where we're going to move forward.
Okay. And sir, if you want to come up and identify yourself, and what's your...
I'm a... My name's Chris Roskam. I'm the owner of the property.
Okay. You're the Chris in... Okay.
Claire and Richard were living with me at the time. That's why Cooper was there.
Right.
I didn't see the incident. I was upstairs. I'd been sick. I woke up to the barking, and a level of barking that is unacceptable to me. So, I was on my way downstairs, not in a big hurry. And the barking stopped, and then I heard, like, screaming. So, at that point, I sprinted down my stairs, out the front door, over around the corner to where the dogs were. And I saw on the way down that my back fence, the corner, had been split open. So, I didn't see the event. I was just there for the aftermath. I tried to secure my two dogs, Quinn and Cooper. I guess Lucy was back there. I didn't really see her. I... When Claire came out, I handed Quinn off to Claire to get her inside, because Cooper was still fighting at me, trying to get back. Got them both inside, secured my dog door. It takes a piece of wood and some screws. And then, at that point, the police had shown up once I'd gotten that all done. So, I went back to talk to them, find out what happened in their eyes.
So, there were three dogs involved in this?
Well...
We have three, and all three got out.
Lucy, at some point, came through the breach.
Okay. But was not involved in the... But was not involved in the attack?
To my understanding, had no part in it.
Okay. So, it was just Quinn and Cooper?
Right.
That were actually attacking Lincoln?
So, what did you want to clear up? You said you wanted to clear something.
Just that Claire and Richard were living with me, and that's why Cooper was there. And then, yeah.
And now, they're living in Framingham?
Yes.
Well, the Southborough is a residential program for the dog? Is that true?
So, that's where the dog is.
So, he's there for two months?
Eight weeks.
Right. No, it's okay.
No, that's right.
Just wanted to be clear. And then, does the trainer know that the intent would be that... Well, first of all, I mean, the dog, if these are stipulations that we put in place, that the dog would need to be following those stipulations in Southborough too? And that then, when the dog was released from that program in two months, he would come out and be living with, under those same requirements? And what does that do to the dog's psyche? I mean, I'm not a dog psychologist. I don't know. But if the dog... It just, on some level, it seems like we're trying to do two things that don't align, and I'm not sure how to get around it.
Well, I mean, the only thing I have to say about that is I know we don't have much of a yard in Framingham, so I actually have to walk him. But he has this muzzle that barely touches his nose. He doesn't mind it. They actually train the dog to get up and, like, want to put the muzzle on. They wait, and they adapt to it, and it becomes, yeah, a new way of life. But they are trained to adapt to that, and walking him... I mean, he won't be in any sort of, like, runner or fence or anything like that. So, I mean, that's all I have to say on that.
So, the training then, in part, might be to get him used to this new way of life for him, wearing a muzzle, always being tethered to a person?
Yeah. So, he actually doesn't leave the property, or hasn't left the property yet, but when he does there, he is muzzled, and he's kind of currently getting him really adjusted to it, so...
Interesting. Other questions?
I just... A quick clarification. You're saying that the yard, where you're living right now, doesn't have a yard big enough for Cooper to be tethered on and outside, run or anything like that? Is that correct?
I mean, it's big enough. It's just, we... There's no fence... There's no...
It's open?
It's completely open. Well, there's a fence on two sides, and then a shed, so the back isn't fenced.
Okay.
But like, there's some chicken wire. Like, it's not really a fence.
It's not anything that's going to secure that dog in that area?
So, there's like a patch there, where it's like a pool area? So, that part is fenced in, because...
So, you're not going to be letting him loose in this backyard, is what you're telling him?
Basically, that's what you're saying. Okay. Thank you.
It's just not the whole thing that's open. It's just a section of it, whereas like the pool is, that part...
Just a note, you have to speak into the microphone, otherwise people can't hear you.
That's okay. The pool just...
Yeah. So, the pool basically is like the fenced-in place by law. Pool has to be fenced in, so that's it.
Thank you.
Other questions for these folks?
I just have one more question. The dog that your dog was attacked by at one point? Do you... Were you... Did you see that attack? And what kind of dog was that?
Well, I was there with my buddy.
Or...
You weren't there on that day.
Oh, no, I wasn't there. I'm sorry. I wasn't there. It was him.
Yeah. He was a little bit younger. It was... I told her the story, so I should have been nervous, but it was... He was like right around, like, becoming a teenager. So, essentially...
Step up a little to the microphone.
So, essentially, he was like a bit of a scaredist dog, so anything would kind of just get her off. And this other...
It wasn't a big dog.
No. No, it was a little bit bigger than him. So, essentially, he just kind of barked at him, and then he, like, ran over to me and kind of like bit, like, tried, almost tried to bite him. You know what I'm saying? Like, going towards him. He just kind of tucked his tail, ran to me. I picked him up. The dog owner kind of took his dog. And after that day, like, we were kind of like, oh, you know? And then, from there, it was kind of like, he was a little bit skittish about other dogs, you know? So, we kind of like separated him a little bit, but he's always good with other dogs. You know? We take him, like, to... He sees my mom's dog maybe once a year. Sees him, he's good, you know?
Okay.
Other questions for these folks?
I have a question.
You can come up.
You have to come up to the microphone.
And probably, you can address your questions to us, Kelly.
Well, I just actually had a question for Claire, because she said that this was a first event, that he had never done anything like that before. But in conversation and text messages since the date of this incident, I thought there was a time where he did bite somebody and harm a cat. No? Okay.
So, indicating the response is no to your question. Is that correct? That does... Is there... Is there anyone here that knows any time when this dog has advanced aggression towards people or children? Do we have any indication of that? I know that was something, Kelly, you indicated interest in. Anyone? Yes, sir?
So, I had let Donna know this, but Cooper did bite me at one time. I'm not a professional, but I've worked with a lot of dogs. I've been bitten a good number of times. Not by my own, generally, but at least six times I've been bit. The last time before that, a pit bull got a hold of my lip and did some serious damage. I haven't shaved my mustache since then.
Was there something that happened that you think made Cooper bite you?
So, I... Listen, I'm going to be honest. I blame that event on myself. When they came to live, Cooper and Lucy, my pit bull, were having a rough time with each other, and he was a little hard on her, in my opinion. Lucy was overly defensive. You know, she'd kind of become alpha, and then Cooper came in, and he wanted to be alpha, and they were having some confusion, in trouble with food. And one night, I was feeding them both bacon in close proximity, and a piece dropped, and they got into it, and I reached in to pull them apart.
Okay.
And he got me. It was very quick.
He probably thought he was a...
I don't think it was intentional. And the reason I say that is he showed extreme remorse for three days after that. And I came home the next day, and I said, "Cooper, what's that?" And he tucked his head down, tail between the legs outside. He didn't look at me for three days. So, listen, I'm going to say this. I care about everybody here, right? In my opinion, I'd have put him down. That's me. And history shows that that's what I try to do. My dog's down for her part, but that's me. You know? If we lived south of the Mason Dixon, I'd have taken him out packing. It'd have been done, you know? But he's not my dog. But when I was told that it was going to be all on me, that's what I was going to do. They were both going to go down, period. That was at my view. I'm not the owner. They proved they are. But that's the truth. You know? Not too many people know about that. I didn't report it. It's not the first time I've been bit. I didn't think he deserved to go down for it. It's kind of my fault, in a way, being kind of stupid. But unless you have questions, that's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other information we should consider? Does anybody have anything else that they want to tell us about this? Before we go into comments and deliberations? Okay. So, I will... So, this is the comment and deliberation portion on our part. And then, you know, following deliberation, which I think will discuss our actions, we will close the public hearing and take a vote. So, does anybody have questions, deliberations, thoughts? Go ahead, Claudia.
Yeah. So, I have a couple, I guess, kind of procedural questions. So, if we were to put certain orders in place, is it for a specific period of time, and then it could be reviewed? Or how does that work? We play, put orders in place, and nothing happens unless there's another incident? Or...
We... It's actually been two, in different ways. For some dogs, based on their activity or what has happened, we have said you need to do these certain things, and then we'll review it in six months or three months, depending on what it is. And others, we just make the determination, and it stays in place unless something changes along the way. So, it's been... We've done both. We've had both issues.
So, potentially, we could put some orders in place and then ask to hear from the trainer at some point, or...
And that's something that people... That's within our purview, in your experience, Steve?
I've seen boards do it. You know, the statute doesn't explicitly say that you get to revisit at a certain point. So, typically, what I advise boards is that if you put a condition in place, and somebody comes back and they ask for you to modify it, you are the hearing authority, so that, you know...
And that would be another hearing, like this one, a formal hearing with the same rules and procedures?
Not really. It'd be a different posture, because the posture here is there's been an incident. You're an investigatory body at this point, essentially, you know, taking testimony. So, if, you know, if the owner comes to you later and says, you know, "Hey, circumstances have changed, X, Y, and Z. It's a whole different ballgame now. We'd like you to relax, you know, condition A," or something like that. You know, the law doesn't preclude that. It doesn't expressly allow for it, and, you know, this is a little bit of a lesser-traveled area of law in the court system, so there's not a robust, you know, body of case law out there telling us that you can do that one way or the other. You know, what I wouldn't do, and what I'd caution you against, I wouldn't put an order in now that you think needs to be made more severe later.
Okay. That's really my question.
Because the statute does not permit you to do that, and I would not want to defend that case, if that's what you do.
So, in other words, not choose to hear from the trainer in three months and have him say that it's not effective, or he has concerns, and then choose to say euthanize? You'd say, "No, don't."
I would not advise the board to do that.
Yeah. You want to go severe, and then if you can lessen it up, we can lessen it up.
Yeah.
Others? Speak up if you have thoughts or proposals to make, or go ahead.
I'll go. As always, as I said earlier, these are tough. And having watched, as a young child, not young, but my own dogs attack each other, seeing dogs get attacked is traumatic and hard. But I'm also the kind of person who feels that if there is a way to allow this dog to continue living, who am I to decide? I'm not its owner. If a life with a muzzle is appropriate or not? I think the restrictions that Donna has recommended to us in regards to if it leaves its property, it has to have a muzzle on, it has to be a short leash. I would rather go that way, and certainly the fact that they have already sent it and are working to try and train the dog. I have seen some dogs be retrained. And it's certainly... And it's certainly, the fact that, I mean, I know we've sat here and required owners to send their dogs to training. So the fact that they've already made that decision and they're investing in that for their dog, I think that shows that there are owners who are, are trying to do the right thing for their dog. So my personal recommendation, and I don't know where the rest of the board stands, would be to not force it being euthanized. I think the fact that, you know, your dad tried to do that, that was his way of handling it. I would say it needs to finish the training. But then the requirements that Donna put in place of, you know, it has to have, have a muzzle, and it can't just be tied outside, I think that's appropriate. That it needs to stay confined. You know, if you were to put, want to put it outside, you'd have to create some kind of enclosed kennel. And, you know, maybe it does not come back to Ashland. I mean, so you're living in Framingham now? Oh, we can't say it can't come back to Ashland? Okay, then that's fine. But I would say that, you know, putting a microchip on him would make sense. The insurance, I think everything that Donna stated makes sense in regards to muzzled, humanely restrained, chipped, and the insurance. I think if we, if we do those.
Can I just make a quick comment, too?
Sure.
Regardless of anything that happens, anything, I will not ever bring my dog back to my dad's house near Woodland Road, ever, just for the sake of how I care for my neighbor, and I know how she feels now about him, regardless of if he is changed or not.
That's a positive thing to hear.
I just wanted to confirm that. As the owner of 292, he'll never be there again. Okay.
Thank you. I have a procedural question. So Claudia brought this up earlier. So this dog is now at a training facility in South Pearl. And I, we don't know how that dog's being kept there, but it sounds like it doesn't have this sort of thing. So how would that, the dog's going to be there for the next two months?
Well, I would think, I would think it would be when the, upon completion of the program and when it gets returned back to its owners, these are the restrictions, when it gets returned to its owners after the training.
No, I think the orders.
We can also certainly give these order to the person who's doing the training.
Yeah, I think that.
And it sounds like some of that's being done anyway in regards to a muzzle and stuff like that, so.
I would think that we would, that we would want the trainer. I would think we want the trainer to start working with the dog with those restrictions in mind.
Okay.
He's already ready for this.
Okay.
He's had a couple of cases. That's kind of like, went exactly this way.
So why don't you come up here again? Because I want, so is, is this person, is your trainer aware of these?
Yeah.
Specific, and he said that he could work with this? Is that?
So he, he told me that he's already dealt with a bunch of cases where he's already, like, saved dogs and this type of.
Right, but these are very specific ways of handling the dog.
Yeah, well, he's on a muzzle now. He already has one. And the one, the thing that he uses is specifically for that type of breed of dog. So the equipment that he needs to use.
All right, thank you. So do you, what?
So we actually have two hoops that we have to jump through. The first one is there's a statutory definition of a dangerous dog.
Right, that we have to vote at first.
There's a statutory definition of a nuisance dog.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
So that someone would need to make a motion for a finding.
Right, right, I have the notes, right. So we need to vote whether he's a dangerous dog, take that vote. But we have to do that after we close the hearing, correct?
That's, that's right.
Yeah, okay. And then we need to decide what restrictions we're going to apply to this dog and the timing of them.
Assuming that the dangerous.
That's after we close.
So it's close, you have step one, close the evidence. Step two, dangerous dog, nuisance dog, neither.
Yeah.
All the possibilities. And then step three, remedial measures, if there's a finding.
So, yeah, go ahead.
I have a question for, for Richard and Claire. So given all of this, given, given what could potentially be Cooper's future, do you feel like, A, you can control the dog? Like, real, like, because, you know, the training is, the training is one thing. And then the other part is when the dog comes home, how, how that dog is going to be reintroduced? And I know that there's a whole program here and that's, but at the end of the day, it's going to be the two of you controlling this dog. So, you know, we want to make sure that if we do put conditions on Cooper, that it is something that not only can be followed, but that is, is something that is doable for both you guys and the dog. Because, because I think that's part of it, too. It's, it's, it is, it is very restrictive what we would put as far as conditions on this dog. And I, and I know, like, it's, it's hard. Like, these, you know, like Yolanda said, these are, this is, this is.
Part of a family.
I mean, I'm a dog owner and I'm listening to the story. And, you know, you know, my dog, I can't let off leash because she has anxiety issues and things like that, too. And, you know, it's almost like one incident can ruin families. And it's heartbreaking. It's heartbreaking for everyone. So my heart goes out to all of you guys. It's, it's, but it's, it's, you know, I, I feel like, you know, I'm, I'm, an eight-week program is, is what I would think a pretty intensive program for this dog. So, I mean, I'm, I'm torn because I do feel like the life for Cooper is going to be very restrictive. But I, I, I feel, I feel like Yolanda does. I feel like that, that if you are willing to commit to the program, if the dog is willing to commit to the program, that, that, you know, potentially, that, you know, Cooper can have, you know, have a life. So, and I, I don't, I don't know if I, I don't, for a first incident, I know it was a, it was a horrible, traumatic incident for everyone. I don't know if I'm, if I'm willing to, to, to put the dog down at this point. But, like, I, 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 it's, it's, but it's, it's, it's a hard situation because I do feel like this, the life for the dog is going to be extraordinarily restrictive. And it has to be, because if there's another incident, if somebody else gets hurt, if another dog gets hurt, like.
Well, we are still.
No, I think we're out, it's our deliberation now, and we've gotten your input and, so.
I would say if you have something new to add.
If you're ready to close the evidentiary hearing and have a deliberation, you would need to.
There's something that.
Yeah, we have a, we still have, yeah.
The opportunity to speak.
Do you have any questions, Joe?
I do.
Okay.
Counselor, I just, there was a question, and I, I don't think I heard it correctly. But any decisions that we make, especially when it comes to banning the dog, are you telling us that we don't have the ability to ban the dog from the town?
That's correct. The statute specifically precludes an order banishing the dog from your town.
Okay. Does it preclude the fact that we need to be aware that the dog is in town? And if the dog has a chip, we will be able to decipher where that dog is constantly, for constant surveillance?
So one of the orders that you can make if you find that the dog is dangerous is that the dog be able to be identified? And one of the ways you could order that is with a chip.
Right, which is in the information that we're thinking of adding.
The other, the other thing that I want to add to Claire and Richard, the program that your dog is in right now is only as good as what you do when that dog gets out of this program. So the support and structure that that dog is getting right now will only be as good if you support that program. If you don't, then it's a waste of time.
And that's actually one of the reasons why I chose not to go to the first place we went to, because they use a shot collar, and they don't really call us to go in. It's kind of, he stays there for a month. It's only half as long. And it's just like more money, honestly. And I didn't see that place.
So the same thing to us, too.
Okay, I just want to make sure that you folks both realize that, you know, the success of that training is, is going to be on your shoulders once that dog leaves that facility. Okay. All right. All right, Andy.
So I will, you know, I will, Kelly, if you want to have some, if you want to add something new to your previous statement, I will let you come up. Did you still want to say something?
So part of my question was what Joe just brought up. So that it's, you're taking awesome steps to take care of your dog, which you probably should have done when he was a puppy. So the follow-up after this training is going to be rigid for you. And if you didn't do it three years ago when you got the dog, how can we be sure that you're going to do it now? It's, it's going to restrict you. You, you're not going to be able to leave the dog with someone else. Your daughter is not seven, there was a comment about leaving the dog with nobody under the age of 17. You've got a young daughter in the house. What about when she wants to have friends come play at the house? You know, it's, I, I understand you love your dog, but things you have to think about moving forward, if there, if, if you're not going to vote to euthanize the dog, you guys have a lot of growing up to do, to be responsible dog owners and not let him do this. To, God forbid a child, my dog is fine, I'm over it. His, his wounds are healing, and he's running, and he's fetching, and he's good. But as soon as I take him for a walk and we come up with another dog, I'm the one that's shaking, not my dog. So they, the dog was not secure at the house that he was in. He was getting out a lot. I mean, Mary Beth told me several times, she had to bring them home. So is that all going to turn around in two months? And all of a sudden, you're going to be these, like, hero dog owners that aren't going to allow this to happen again? That's my concern. Because if it's a child, I know you couldn't live with it, and I could not live with that. Because a child, in that backyard that day, would be dead.
Thank you. And did you want to respond to that or say?
I guess just, I mean, I definitely could have done more with my dog when he was little. That's totally on us. I just had.
Well, I think part of what Kelly was asking about your future and how you will handle these situations. So if you could maybe address that? Because I think the board.
Um, I mean, I am, as you guys can tell, I love my dog. I think we're committed if that means that my daughter can't have her friends around. If that means that I can't have him around young kids, we'll build him a kennel outside. And that's where he'll stay when she has friends over. I mean, the lengths that we have to go are the lengths that we will go. And if that's what we have to do. I mean, when I had him, when Cooper was born, I had my daughter. Two months later, three months later, I just wasn't thinking on training him. I just had so much going on. And clearly, that was probably the biggest mistake. I mean, not only that, but I guess, yeah, anything else?
All right, thank you. All right, I think if there's nothing further, we're, I think we're ready to close the evidentiary portion of this hearing.
I move that we close the hearing on the dangerous dog.
Motion's been made in second to close the hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hearing's closed, so.
I move that we vote to deem Cooper as a dangerous dog.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made to deem Cooper a dangerous dog has been made and seconded. All those, any further discussion on that? I don't think, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, none. So Cooper, unanimous vote, Cooper's been deemed a dangerous dog. So now this, we get into the measures we will take as a result of that finding?
So I move that we take the recommendations from our animal control officer and impose items one, items two, items three, item four, item six, and item seven.
What was the items you left?
I only left out five, which is that as a dangerous dog, Cooper will not be permitted to have, that he will not be permitted to be owned, possess, or have the care or custody by someone who is 18. I mean, 17. I mean, hearing that the dog grew up with the child, I would think that they take precautions. Should they have friends come over, it would either be restrict Cooper. The other thing is hopefully with the training that Cooper gets, I mean, dogs can be trained. I had a dog who, we trained him to stay, and he would sit in one spot. We would have a party in the house, and he would stay there. Now, because of what has happened, maybe that's not the case. I don't know. But I would say that, yeah, so that we, the restrictions that we put on him are one, two, three, four, six, and seven.
Other thoughts on that discussion? I guess.
Is there a second?
Well, any further discussion on this? On this, any discussion or question about this particular motion? Well, I guess we do need a second.
Yeah, you need a second to discuss it.
So is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, so, so the motions are made and seconded. Discussion, questions?
Yeah, I just, um.
Go ahead.
You know, no, I just wanted, first of all, you know, thank everybody. You know, first of all, how kind and heartfelt you are to one another, even though you're coming from different perspectives and how civil you've all been to one another. And, you know, we live in a world now where people, when they don't always agree, they're not very civil. And I just really appreciate that. You know, and, and I just want to add, in terms of the commitment, this is, this is just such a huge commitment, right? You know, when I think about even having a child, and there are times when you kind of might screw up because you let up a little bit, and it's so easy to do that in life. And so this, this commitment on your part is truly massive. And I hope that if at some point, you know, that you feel that you can't live up to that commitment, that you think about finding, you know, a special home or wherever they would take a dog with this kind of history, rather than just going about and letting up on what you've committed to probably here tonight. So I just, you know, want to say that, that if you feel that you can't go forward at some point, that you do the right thing then for everybody. Because you don't ever want to have to live with, you know, anything that could happen that this dog could do, and especially if it was because you weren't as committed that day, right? And, and, and two, I just want to thank your, your dad for his honesty. And I think a lot of us understand, you know, uh, I just hope that you appreciate him and how he's trying to do the right thing, too. And again, I just really appreciate everybody's civility to one another here tonight. And this is certainly, you know, really just a difficult thing. So that was just my comments.
Thank you. I would have to unfortunately interrupt this. We, we're required to open another legal hearing. And then we will suspend, I guess, we'll suspend that hearing and finish this one. But since it's, we've made a public notice that 8:20 we'll start a hearing. We need to do that. So if you'll just bear with me. Notice is hereby given that the select board will conduct a public hearing regarding a Class II license, new beginning auto service currently operating at 72 Nickerson Road. Is requesting open a second location at 73 Waverly Street, currently middle sex mode. Operating a Class II license. This is not a request for additional license and would replace the current, this would replace the current license. So a public hearing will be held at Ashland Town Hall, 101 Main Street, Wednesday, March 6th at 8:20 PM. You may attend in person or via Zoom. Parties wishing to be heard in this matter should appear at the time and place indicated above. So I would ask for a motion to.
Motion to open the public hearing for the Class II license.
I'll second that.
Motion made in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. And motion to suspend until we finish this discussion.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made in second to suspend until we finish this one. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Okay. So gentlemen, I think you're here for the other hearing. We're suspending it for some time, but we'll, we'll get to you, so.
And then I would just say to Sustainability Committee, just hold on. These things sometimes take longer than expected. So we'll have to take you after we do the Class II license.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure. Oh, good. Good thinking. Okay. All right, thank you, Claudia. So, and I, again, I also appreciate every, you know, this is a difficult decision. So, you know, my own feeling of this is that I do agree that we can take these measures rather than euthanizing the dog, which I'm certainly cognizant of the, the trauma that this has involved. And, you know, I'm sorry that it all happened. These are not an easy decisions. So is there, so we've made, the only, I do have questions about not having the child. I thought that was kind of an important, how do you see getting around that in the future? If there's, if, say, there's, the dog is there with just a young child? And that would seem to me kind of important.
I would see that there, you know, if they're the responsible dog owners, that they seem to be showing us that they are regarding the, you know, the retraining of this dog and the willingness to put in a muzzle, that if they already have a small child in their home, they're going to be cautious with that, so that if other children come, they would continue that cautiousness. And if we were to say that it, you know, it, I mean, the, the, the actual thing is that as a dangerous dog, Cooper shall not permit a child under the age of 17 to own, possess, or have the care or custody of such dog. So obviously, the dog, the child is never, you know, no, someone under 17 is not going to own the dog. These are the dog owners. And that, again, that they would not leave the dog in the custody of or care of their young child. But the way this is stated, first of all, it's not relevant because the dog, they, the, the dog is owned by these two adults. So.
Okay. All right.
That particular one didn't seem, make sense to me.
Any other further discussion on this before we, yes, go ahead.
I just have one comment.
Sure.
And Claire, it's for your dad. You're a victim here, too, you know? You put, you put, but you put your dog down. You put your dog down, man. Okay? That goes, that goes a long way. Okay? I just want that on the record.
All right, are we, are we ready to vote? A motion's been made and seconded. All right, so all those in favor of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
We don't need a roll call vote. This is just aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
So we have one person opposed. So the motion carries for one. All right, so we have one person opposed. So the motion carries four, one. All right, so I believe that.
Can I just make one, only because I'm the one who made the motion? I want to thank you for your honesty, and I can, again, I can relate to how difficult this is on both sides. Certainly, you know, with Quinn being put down, and Cooper almost did but didn't. And the last thing I would say is to you, Claire and Richard, you have some serious responsibility here. But I also think you have people who are going to support you and, and help you through this. And just continue to support your neighbors, and, and I wish you the best of luck. And as Claudia said, should you no longer be able to do or keep Cooper the way we've expected you to, that you'll know the right thing to do. It's never easy having to make that decision to let a dog go or let a pet go. But good luck with it. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our hearing on this matter. Thank you all for coming. Okay, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks, Donna. So we need to unsuspend the hearing?
Motion to unsuspend the public hearing for the class two license.
All those in favor of unsuspending, say aye.
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 Okay. So gentlemen, you can come up. You're here for the class two license, I presume? And just to remind everybody, anyone who wants to speak, come up to the microphone. Is there anyone, is there anyone remote that is, wants to speak on this matter? Raise their hand or make themselves known. Okay, I think I've opened the hear, the hearing's been opened. So do we have a presentation by the staff on this, review or anything?
I don't think so. Typically, it's the.
Do you guys have a present, a brief presentation you want to? So this is a license transfer, so we have the new owner here. Who's the new owner and who's the old owner, I think? And you're the old.
You can come to the microphone.
Yeah, so why don't you come up here and give us a, yeah.
Over here?
Yeah, right. Speak into that microphone, so the folks at home can hear you.
My name is Hector Ibera.
I'm Jose Padilla.
We've been, we've been partners here in Ashland since, we started back in two thousand and seven with J C Auto Sales. We left there. We started New Beginnings on Nickerson Road about eleven, twelve years ago?
Around two thousand and ten.
Two thousand and ten. We've been leasing that place. We've been, we've been up and running. And the opportunity came on the table. We've been great friends with Ronnie Reese here for many years. I don't know the count, but many years. And, yeah, the opportunity came on the table, and we're looking to continue to grow the same way you guys gave us an opportunity. When he was twenty and I was thirty, not knowing what we were doing, I think we got our feet underground now as young kids, after following good steps, you know, and we just need to clean up the place and keep it going under the same, pretty much legacy that what have they done for forty, fifty years? We're trying to take over and keep it in good hands and keep selling cars.
Questions, thoughts? Any issues with the paperwork, Susan? It's all complete? She's nodding yes.
Everything is complete, but just for clarification, this is not a transfer of a license. This is a new license. The current license for Middlesex Motors is going to be turned in, and this will be a new license that'll be issued to them.
He hasn't, he hasn't.
This is one of the hottest things I've ever done in my, thirty-seven years with you guys, as you know. You've been with me the whole time.
So we're, we're closing a license and.
Oh, that's funny.
Yes.
So we're closing, we're, we're canceling one license and on looking to create and offer a new license.
Yes, we're not canceling Nickerson Road, though.
So you're going to have two licenses?
Thank you, yes, please.
You're still staying at Nickerson Road, and now you're looking to stay at?
That is correct, on Main Street, yeah, on Waverly Street.
Well, good for you guys.
Thank you, thank you. That's, that's the idea, to be on a main road, back on a main road. Because for many years, a lot of people said, oh, it doesn't matter where you are with the internet. But I feel like people are going back to the old school days, stopping by the shop, as long as it looks good, looks presentable with the nice inventory. I think we're going to be all right.
Okay.
All right. So, yeah, you just.
Question. I know all the paperwork is in. I saw everything. I don't see anything out of line with that. You're looking to have a total of eighteen vehicles on that site?
Yes.
Okay, and I saw the map of how you had it all out there. Ron, how many cars did you have out there?
So I had eighteen cars.
Yep.
When I got the eighteen car license, there was two businesses there.
Okay.
So I only had the, the east side of the lot, which is that exact same drawing.
Yep.
That was eighteen cars. And then D C Auto Repair was in the garage, and they had the remainder of the building.
Okay, and on the backside, on the backside?
There's a whole lot more room. So now it's an opportunity, now that I'm, there's only going to be one person in there now. It's going to be these guys.
Okay.
So there's an opportunity for them to expand and do what they're doing. And he's, they're doing, they power washed the building. They've done the office over. They've done the bathrooms over. I mean, he's going to town. He's really doing a great job. It's going to look really good over there.
Nice.
And he's letting me be a little bit involved with.
A little.
Keep you engaged.
Yeah, we are.
He's letting me hang around a little bit on this. So that's making me happy too, so it's making it easier for him, you know what I mean?
Yep. Now, I know on Nickerson Road, you had somebody that was going to be doing the mechanical work off-site. What's, what, is there an understanding that you'll be doing the mechanical work there or no?
I'm doing, he's, the whole chavanne is theirs. I'm the boss.
Okay.
He's going to have the garage. He's, and everything's legit, everything.
Yep. So will you be doing mechanical work on-site?
So, so pretty much, I mean, like, the idea right now we, we have is to have more like, like a showroom type of place, you know? I mean, like, the building, I mean, like, it's right on Main Street, you know? So what we'd like to do is pretty much, I mean, like, instead of doing mechanic, have more as a showroom.
Showroom.
Nice vehicles inside, you know, I mean, like, that people can actually go and see, and vehicles ready to go, pretty much.
Yep.
Because if we already have a facility that can do mechanic, you know, I mean, like, we're five minutes away from each location.
Sure.
So we can just pretty much get the whole cars ready on Nickerson Road, and when it's ready, bring it to Main Street.
We, we're going after the nicer stuff. We're, we're kind of done with the oil changes, more mechanical stuff. So we're, we're planning on really cleaning up that location as far as, you know, even, even some of the stuff around. Just clean it up, make it look nice, and see what we can kind of stay on the retail side, nice, clean, not have to wear the boots anymore.
I remember how old I was when I kind of moved from that old stuff that needed a lot of work.
Yeah. You mean the duct tape? So it's very, it's going to be similar to the setup that's on Route one twenty-six right now. Used to be the old, no, no, this is the one further down that has a showroom itself.
Yeah, J C.
Yes, yes. So it'd be similar to that idea. Okay. Yeah, it used to be for his marina for, for us all folks, yeah.
That's, that's where we started, so I do remember the marina.
Yep.
Any further questions? I know we're having a fun time here. All right, do I have a motion to?
Motion to close the hearing.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Hearing's closed.
Motion to approve the new class two license for a new beginning auto service at seventy-three Waverly Street with the hours, so with the hours listed in your application.
Yes.
Great. Second.
Motion's been made in second to grant the new license. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none. Okay. Congratulations, you have a new license.
Congratulations.
Thank you for, thank you again. I remember coming.
These are the positive things we like, to be able to support. To be able to support and see a business grow like this in town. That's great.
I got a copy of it.
I was really thankful because we came in twelve years ago.
My son took my science down and hung it in his garage, and he put a post on Facebook that I still can't read. I still can't read it.
Was it, when was it in twenty twelve? Do you remember? Was it this time of year or was it later in the year? Okay, then the only one sitting here would have been Joe.
It was me.
In January twenty twelve.
I remember going down there, looking at the sign and going, wow.
Yeah.
Very young on that.
Yeah, good, yeah.
Thank you very much.
Well, good luck. Thank you.
Thank you. The best of luck.
All right, so we have, the next item is the report from the Sustainability Committee. Did Ash make it back?
Ash has not made it back yet.
Okay. So we will, well, I expect him back.
I expect him any minute. Should we discuss the town manager's evaluation process?
Yeah, I think that's a good.
I deny.
Well, don't we have a subcommittee working on it? Aren't they going to present, or are you?
I, I thought you wanted to go through.
Okay, sorry, go ahead.
This is this year's process.
Oh, you're, we're just reviewing the usual process.
We're just reviewing what we're going to do from now before, before May. Yeah, that's all.
Go ahead.
Okay. Got a lot of paper here today.
But I think it's, it's the same one. So what is it we want to discuss about this?
So I put together a proposed timeline for the board, and I think it's just really kind of reviewing that and making sure that you're okay with it.
This is before the.
Yeah, so this, we would still be using the evaluation form that we've currently been using. So, you know, what I'm proposing is that on March twenty-second, or by March twenty-second, I provide the board with a self-evaluation. In between March twenty-fifth and March twenty-ninth, the board members would complete the individual evaluations, send to the town manager, and then we'll take the week of April first through April fifth to, to meet individually and to go over those event, individual evaluations. That would leave April seventh through April tenth time for the board to send their evaluations to the chair for compilation. And then it gives the chair a little more than a week, ending on April seventeenth. The chair gives him an opportunity to develop a composite evaluation and statement, which would then be released at the April seventeenth meeting. So this keeps things in time for the current board before there's any changeover. And again, it would be the last meeting in April, so typically, we don't have a first meeting in May. It's typically done before town meeting. So hopefully, if you're okay with this, we'll move forward with that.
I think so.
I think so.
I'll make my, my compilation swift and.
So currently, does, is the evaluation all handwritten?
So in the past, Susan has sent it to us so we can do it electronically.
Yeah, you should, you should have received a copy with, with the packet today?
Yeah, but Susan has been able to send it to us so we can do it all.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a fillable PDF that you can then print out and save and send back.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
So we could also do it as a, I set it up as a Google form, and we could do it, and then it would, perhaps you could tabulate it automatically and everything.
So who does?
So maybe I could sit with.
I think it did.
No.
We did have one.
I remember doing it manually one time.
I remember it tabulating automatically.
Really?
Yeah, last time I did it as chair.
I did it manually last year.
Yeah.
So, I mean, the only thing is, is it's going to change, the whole thing is going to change again.
Yeah, I know, so it, you know.
But if you were able to put it into the drive, it's already there.
Oh, it's already there.
Claudia, you've already done it?
Oh.
So how does that, how would that work then, Claudia? So we would?
So here, so you.
This is a shareable document?
Yeah, so what I do is send it to you, right? And then it forces you for each of the categories, right? You choose one through five or N A, and then it, then it gives you a place to add comments, and then you go down and it moves on to the next category, same, right? And then the very end, and then it feeds into a, it feeds into a spreadsheet, so you can tabulate. I don't know if you did score by just total number, if you did it by some kind of point value assigned to each.
No, each, it was total number.
Just total number. It looked like that when I looked at them.
And then it was be total and then divided, so that you'd, you know, either have a three or four, basically.
Yeah, so we can set it up to do that easily. I mean, I just thought it looked like a lot of work for the chair.
Thank you for being so. I think, I think in the past, I thought, I thought that Susan did the averaging, but I did it three years ago, whatever.
Well, I don't think Susan needs to do any extra work either.
Yeah, right. Very good.
I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, so that's great.
But I did a.
So can Michael, like, because Michael will need a copy of each of our evaluations before it goes to Rob, right? That's how it'll.
Right, but we should each, we should each be able to save our own evaluation, and then.
Yeah, how does that, so is this one, a single shareable, like, we're all, like, accessing the same Google Doc? Is that?
It's a form, so everybody gets a copy of the form and fills it out. And then I can take that and create, we can automate the creation of a document that would be for each of us and how we responded with each respondent, and then Michael could have those.
So that's great.
Great.
I actually printed one to show all of, everybody, but I forgot it at home.
Well, that helps us.
Yeah, helpful, right? I do that a lot. I print stuff and leave it, leave it in the printer.
As chair, I especially thank you, so. All right. Ash is here.
Yes.
All right. Hi, Ash. Come on up. Well, it's us who are being scheduled, yes.
My daughter wanted to be part of the civic process, and then she decided she didn't.
Yeah, she'd had enough of that.
She was. She saw part of it.
She absolutely enjoyed it.
She got a good taste of it.
Got the fun part.
So Ash, what, I know, are, are you going to do a presentation? Are you set to do that?
If that's available to you, I, so, yes, or I can hook up and I can make it available.
And just to kind of review, and Yolanda, you could, and my understanding, this is, there's kind of a twofold purpose here. One, we have our program to interview committees, and I think this is sustainability. But also, they are very active and are proposing a warrant article for town meeting. So I think we also thought this is a good opportunity to get into that.
Yeah, so, so as we said, we, we want to have committees to start coming before us, and a number of people thought Sustainability was a good one to start with, and then with the discussion of the tree bylaw, and there was another one that they're looking to have before town meeting. I felt that it was good to bring them before us today. I know, my understanding is the tree law, tree bylaw is not going to be coming before spring town meeting. But, but I think an update on what's going on, and I think that's, that's pretty much it.
So we'll talk, so we'll see how things go, and Ash has a long present, has a lot of slides, but I don't think he intends to spend much time.
I don't think it was that many slides.
Fifteen minutes, that's all.
Fifteen minutes, then we can get into discussion.
So is it already shared or?
Right. Some of it's history, so.
Oh, okay.
But I think he understands that we've.
I looked at, yeah. I looked at a first, the first few, I guess. I was more interested in some of the other stuff.
No, no kidding.
There's more content there, more for your own reading than, than anything else.
Yeah, okay. For, for, you know, nighttime reading.
I promise you, I'll try and make it as painless as possible.
It's all good stuff.
Okay. We good?
Yeah, we're good.
Ashwad Chinnani, Chair of the Sustainability Committee, intend to speak fast, so tell me to slow down if I'm going too fast for you.
Okay.
All right, so the intent behind giving you this update was, was twofold. One, there's been a lot of conversation about the tree bylaw. Some of it was understood, some of them, there was a little bit of misinformation. There've been a lot of developments, so we wanted to give you a quick update as to where that stands. There was a lot of interest in town around the tree bylaw, so we'll talk about that. We also have, as part of that, we realized that there was still a little bit of a misunderstanding as to what the Sustainability Committee has been focused on, and what the priorities of the Sustainability Committee are, and why we're even focused on a tree bylaw. So as a starting point, where I'd like to maybe start is, you know, just reminding folks that our, our focus is to achieve net zero by twenty forty, which is a charter that was given to us by, by the town. And since our last update, we've given you a couple of updates on it. You know, we've had Sam join us. Obviously, she wasn't here when I, when I last spoke to you, which we are thrilled about. But, you know, Sam's been working with the M A P C to track progress. We're not on track, not even close. But we also have held a lot of open houses. We participate with, in a, in a lot of town forums, you know, whether it's, we don't do Ashland Day, but, but we do do, like, farmers' markets, and I think Brandy, I've spoken to you a few times at, at farmers' markets. We've, we've been part of other events at town. So that's, that's part of our agenda to. So that's, that's part of our agenda to really educate people on the topic of sustainability and why it's important to net zero, but we also have continued to engage, you know, whether it's in participating on town projects, you know, we've sponsored a number of articles. We have started to run into a few challenges, so I wondered, you guys, as, as the board that's nominated, each of us, we are a volunteer board, we've had a lot of churn, we've had a lot of people resign, so a, a large portion of last year, for me at least, has been trying to rebuild the base of the commi, committee and sort of pick back up on our agenda. We've been slowed down on it a little bit. And we do have, we, we have started reaching a point where we, we might be needing a little bit more professional guidance, since all of us are volunteers, we're all passionate about the topic. We've educated ourselves on the topic quite a bit, but there are certain areas, like when we start getting into building codes and things like that, that we're starting to feel that maybe having some engagement with an outside consultant might be useful. So, starting to think about that. But there are a few things that we wanted you as a select board to be conscious of, that, that there are actions that you can take. So I'm just going to hit those up front, just in case we run out of time. A lot of the presentation then is going to be supporting this. But just in setting direction and focus, I think we've tried to engage you on a regular basis, I think we need to do better with engaging you as well with more forums like this. But this is what I was talking about, getting some, you know, explore ways to find some funds to get some subject matter expertise. For example, on the tree bylaw, Margie did an enormous amount of work to get it to a certain stage. We worked with the planning board, and our hope was that between those engagements, we'd be able to get the expertise, but obviously, we ran into issues with how should we measure a tree, or how should we cost something out, where having input from someone who's done work in that space would have been probably better suited earlier on in the project? And, and that's something I'd like to maybe bring back in as we rethink what we ought to do with the tree bylaw. That's going to require funding. As a committee, we've never really come to you for funding requests, so I'm going to work with Michael and maybe Rob, just to try and figure out what that should look like, and maybe come back to you with a few proposals. I'm not quite sure I'm ready to make that ask yet, but that's something I'm going to start exploring. Second, we are going to put the opt-in code, which did not pass town meeting last time. There have been some material changes there, a lot of updates there, so I'm going to spend a few minutes today just talking about that, but we are going to bring that warrant article back. And then you, as a select board, have the ability to take action on something called the PACE program, which allows businesses in Ashland to effectively get loans that will allow them to make energy efficiency improvements, but then pay for those loans out of the savings that they get right out of the energy efficiencies they make. So how that works is by basically putting a lien on the, on the business, and for that, the town has to one-time opt-in to the program itself, Massachusetts runs it, to the PACE program, you as a select board, and then the business owner then has the ability to even apply for a, for a PACE loan. So I've got a little bit of detail about that in the presentation, I'm not going to cover that or drain that a lot, but that's more one of the reading material things that I left for you. Happy to come back and talk to you about that. And then we have been talking about, Brandy, one of the suggestions you had made at the town for, at the open forum we held for the tree bylaw was around education, and maybe looking for ways to find, ways to expand, you know, the, the tree canopy. So we've been investigating, DCR has an urban forestry grant. In support of that, though, we'd like to maybe have the town formally apply for and get a Tree City USA certification from the Arbor Day. It has a, a, a basic level of requirement that, that we can spend a little bit of time on. What it does do is opens up funding opportunities with either partnerships with corporate partners that Arbor Day has, or with the state. For example, this DCR program around urban forestry does give preference to Tree City USA designated cities. So these are just some things that we've already sort of come back with as being constructive things that we can do that don't cost the town anything in a material way, and I believe we're actually kind of already meeting some of those bars. So we'll speak a little bit about that. Before we do, though, just remember why we're doing it. This is, you know, for that goal of 2040, and we had done, the, the foundation of the plan really was focused on where do we get emissions from, right, in the town? And so this was the survey we had done, it's been reborn out by the MAPC survey that was done after, after the fact as well. And the major thing to take away from here is the vast majority of our emissions come from transportation and from buildings. And so when you think about net zero, it, as a concept, is about, one, reducing the emissions that we have as a town from those buildings, from transportation being the major sectors, and then it's about expanding the absorption of carbon away from the atmosphere, and which is why we talk about the tree bylaw, for example, because the only way we, we know for sure to remove carbon is through ecosystems from trees, wetlands, and protecting those and expanding those, right? So as a town, we're never going to get to a point where we can basically make our emissions zero, that's not practical. So what we have to do is find the balance between reducing emissions and then increasing the way that we capture carbon, and that's why we kind of focus on both of those as being really important aspects of achieving net zero. So the efforts that we take then are really focused on where can we reduce emissions? How can we encourage people, train them, educate them, have programs around it, and then how do we have programs that will effectively absorb carbon away from our atmosphere so we can achieve that balance? So for now, just in the next twelve to twenty-four months, our major focus areas, again, are going to be focused on, one, energy supply. So Michael, you've done work around making our aggregation contract, for example, a hundred percent renewable, right? And we've been having a conversation about how can we make that? That's a great first step. How can we move that to more local options, you know, whether it's part of the aggregation program, or it's expanding solar options within town, right? So that basically allows us to green up our energy supply itself, and then when you take that essential component of now you have a green energy supply, how can we switch the usage of energy then towards that supply source, right? So when we look at buildings and transportation then, a big priority becomes electrification, right? So it's around expanding the use of heat pumps, for example, so we've done, for example, a, a solar pump challenge in the past. We now have a group called Energize Ashland, so I, I'd say they're removed from the Sustainability Committee with a lot of support from the Sustainability Committee, they'll probably want to come to you and, and sort of proclaim themselves a little bit, but, but the main goal there was to create a grassroots effort, to actually talk about energy efficiency, create energy champions, folks that are not necessarily focused on a committee level, but rather are, you know, residents that are sort of doing things at a grassroots level. And then, this is where the adoption of the specialized code really becomes important because it basically allows that new buildings really start switching to electric. And, and without that, you know, we'll never really achieve net zero at all, right? So, so that becomes an important aspect of our, of our next twelve to twenty-four months. Getting access then to a PACE program, I think, is an easy way for us to open up funding for businesses, to start switching over to electrification and, and doing energy efficiency, again, doesn't cost the town anything. Michael, it does require effort from town staff because you now have liens that you have to manage, so there's a management component to it, but you get a lot of support from the state on both education as well as setting up that program, right? So, once you opt into it, you know, you, you actually unlock a lot of support from the state to, to, to kind of set up the program properly in this, in, in the town. And then we continue to do work around establishing, whether it's newsletters, whether it's the talks that we do around rebates that are available, incentives that are available, and we continue to do that. I think Sam's doing an excellent job in, in just doing a lot of outreach there.
On the trans. Sam, do you want to come up here and, because I think we all like to see you a little closer, and if you have anything to add to, we're very happy that you're here, and if you have anything to add, a comment to this, feel free, okay?
Yes, I will. I was going to say, I will let Ash finish his presentation, and then I can sort of.
That's great, yeah, great, thank you.
Don't use the train thought.
Yeah.
So then, if we go from buildings then to transportation, you know, again, our focus is, again, on the specialized stretch code because it has aspects of it, so my very next slide is just going to spend a little bit of time on the specialized stretch code. But it's really around expanding EV charging infrastructure, and then pushing for the greater use of EVs in the municipal fleet, which, again, I think, Sam, you've been a lot of work on, so you can talk about it when we get to you. And then the ecosystem side is where we focused on drafting and adopting a tree bylaw. We are pausing it, we're not going to bring it for this town meeting, but I have a set of steps that I'm going to talk to you about, that, that we'll take, you know, in, in, in trying to sort of achieve that, and what we've done so far. But also, we're going to start looking at how we introduce and pursue sustainable development practices. So when you're doing construction, how can that be made more sustainable, you know, so that we are effectively reducing the impact to the environment during that construction period itself? And as much as possible, our goal is going to be that we try and follow the state on this. I think we'd made the statement at a town meeting as well, that we don't believe as, as a town, we necessarily have always the infrastructure to kind of go it alone, but there's a lot of engagement and lobbying at the state level to make sure that the right things get passed, but then it's on us, once those bylaws are passed, or once an opt-in code becomes available for us to adopt it, because if you don't, then it's kind of wasted. All right, so in terms of the stretch code, last time when we spoke about it at town meeting, there was a lot of confusion as to what it was that, that the opt-in code included, and what was the difference between the stretch code and the opt-in code. I presented this slide then, and I'd actually gotten confused myself candidly, right? So one of the first things that I want to kind of point out is, we already have the stretch code, and this is super important because as of July 2024, a lot of the efficiency gains and the requirements that were, were a part of the opt-in code, if you had adopted it then, are now actually going to be part of the stretch code automatically, so they already apply, right? And the second thing that I had confused people on was that, and actually, I'd done that at the select board meeting when I presented, was I, I suggested incorrectly that renovations were, were, were under the agencies of the opt-in code, and they're actually part of the stretch code. So candidly, the state really, really messed up how they rolled this out, it was super confusing even for people who had actually gone through this line by line. Fortunately, over time now, that's been clarified quite a bit, we've spent a lot of time with Doug, we've spent a lot of time with Tricia, just trying to sort of take this thing apart. And some of the important things that have happened, one, there are now thirty-one communities that have adopted this. Unfortunately, because Ashland decided not to adopt it, a few of our neighborhood towns used the justification that if Ashland didn't find it good enough, then we shouldn't find it good enough, and really, for no other reason, basically rejected the opt-in code for just that reason. So I'd like to correct that record. We've been leaders, usually I'd like not to be a leader in, in not adopting something like this.
That's funny.
But we have worked with the planning board, the building inspector, to clarify a lot of the confusion, I think we've got a much better handle on sort of what this thing is.
Well, you've worked with Tricia, not, not technically a planning board, right?
Tricia's been representing, that's right. There, there is better cost data and studies.
Well, I would be careful about that, so make sure, if you think you want to hear, you should probably appear before the planning board, yeah.
There's also better cost data and studies that, that are starting to emerge, because obviously now with thirty-one states, thirty-one cities, you know, adopting it, about twenty-five percent of the state's population's already covered by it, you know? And then, as I said, the most important change is that as of July 2024, the stretch code and the specialized code really have a lot of parity on the performance and efficiency standards, the one exception of multifamily houses that are greater than fifteen thousand square feet, where they have to go passive home, which was, there, there are two pathways in the, in the stretch code, one is meet a higher rating, and if you are going to be mixed fuel, then you have to have an even higher efficiency rating. In the case of buildings that are over fifteen thousand square feet and they're multifamily, you really don't have the ability to use mixed fuels, you basically have to go down the passive home pathway. But apart from that one, one change, really the only thing that gets left out then, what we effectively would be requiring by adopting the specialized code would be, one, pre-wiring for all buildings. So whether you're, if you're all electric, you already are pre-wired, but if you are choosing to go down the path of, of, you know, a fossil fuel based heating system for a new building, then the builder has to pre-wire the building upfront, and the, and the rationale behind that is obviously while the building's big built, putting the wiring in is way cheaper than it is to try and do that as a retrofit. So that's number one. Number two is, if you're using mixed fuels, then you have to account for a certain amount of solar PV capacity. So if you think about the priorities that I've laid out for you upfront, right, expand solar, local sonar, electrify buildings, and then the third one is effectively a requirement for electric wicked charging, you know, those, the specialized code really hits at all of those three things that we really have to do, and the state's already kind of done this, we are already getting hit by, or the builders here have to already adopt the stretch code because we already are part of it, so all the efficiency standards are there, you know, addition of the specialized code just gets us these three additional things that I believe are, are super critical, and, and really are rightly done for new buildings first and foremost. So I'll pause there, that one was actually a, a big thing. So this is what we'll be bringing to town meeting, and I have presented this to the ABA as well, I think, Michael, you met with them today, I, I met with them a couple of weeks back, it's, or they posted that on YouTube. We had a great conversation, I think they were expecting me to talk about the tree bylaw, we ended up talking about this, but we spent almost an hour talking about it, and it was basically a consortium of builders, real estate agents, we got great questions, and, you know. Not sure, I, I've sold it to all of them, but I didn't really get pushback from all of them either, so.
Yeah, I think it's helpful to have that kind of done, so we'll hopefully save time and confusion at town meeting.
In the interest of time, I've posted this cost and savings data, you know, this is, again, from the state, I've given you the link, but, you know, with the incentives that are in place, and if you take into account the sort of annual savings, what this is showing is that, you know, the additional cost imposed by the, by the requirements of the stretch code really are now, you know, at par, that they really make a hundred dollar, two hundred dollar difference, right? In, in terms of, in, in terms of the impact, you know, that that's created, it's no longer in the hundreds of thousands of dollars, right? Again, I won't rain this just in the interest of time, happy to post these slides. I think, Sam, we can probably post it, post these slides up on our, on our website. All right, as far as the tree bylaws concerned, we, we had a rationale that, you know, when you drive around town, Ashland as a town obviously feels very green, we've got Ashland State Park, we've got Hopkin State Car, we've got a great town forest. We've got, we've got a pretty rich history of doing conservation, but the reality is, and I've got a little picture that, that maybe brings this, this was, this was a Heat Island survey, I think, Sam, this was Framingham State did this, and MAPC had done this, right? So this is towns of Ashland and, and Framingham, and what you can start seeing is, you know, the urban effect, you don't, we don't think of ourselves as a particularly urban town, at least if you look at, like, downtown, and you look at that Elliott Street treat area, you can start seeing that Heat Island effect starting to show up, and this is really a result of a, a lot of development that's happened in town, and, and because we're starting to lose that tree canopy. So our goal first and foremost was to start to preserve some of that tree canopy, and then it's not just about trees, it's about the ecosystem those trees live in, right? So whether it's wetlands, whether it's soil, you know, those are all carbon stores. So if you think about the two-legged stool of net zero, right, we've got to sort of protect the things that actually take carbon out, and if we, if we keep getting rid of those ecosystems, then, then we really don't have a hope in heck to try and achieve our goals. In addition to that, there is a pretty significant economic cost losing tree, so we, we heard a lot of feedback, you know, that, oh my God, this is going to make the cost of building so much more expensive, guess what, we're paying for it anyway, it's just a social cost. This is classic tragedy of commons, right, where the cost is borne by society, which isn't particularly obvious, but when it becomes obvious in a, in a specific area, now suddenly everybody's sort of worried about it. Whether it's because, you know, we have a loss of wetlands, or, or drainage issues, or wastewater issues, right, somewhere someone is paying for this anyway, so it's, it then becomes a question of balancing out how we, we equitably introduce protections that don't necessarily penalize one or the other group, but still provide those protections and, and sort of bring, bring back the character that the town had. And our goal always was really to try and sort of take that broader view, not necessarily go after protecting one tree at a time, you know, from a net zero perspective, you know, yeah, we, we'd love to protect the historic trees, but, but that doesn't necessarily achieve the goal, right? It is about protecting the larger tracts of land that that are still sort of composite together. I remember, Michael, two years back, you and me had a conversation where you were like, Ash, don't go after the individual trees, like, look at those those undeveloped tracts of land and try and focus on 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 trying to protect those, right? So that's been the goal. It was also never our goal to try and shut down development. We were conscious of the fact that the town in and of itself can't really afford that, right? So the challenges that we had and the feedback that we got really, you know, one, we'd done a survey in twenty twenty-three that that did show overwhelming, you know, support for the program. But, you know, getting support on, do you want to protect trees is relatively easy. Actually turning that into a bylaw, a little bit harder. But we we knew that it was important to do, and we heard this pretty clearly, right? Even on the open forums that we did, including the much-publicized one that we did in collaboration with the planning board, we heard people come in very much in support of protecting trees and fighting climate change. I had a number of people who came up and said, we're not doing enough. I also had members of the planning board tell me that the that the current set of rules do not provide clarity. So while the planning board does do a stand-up job of trying to figure out how best to mitigate the impact of development, you know, they don't feel like they have the right set of rules or or the right structure in place to to always achieve that goal. And, you know, if you don't do it now, you know, there aren't that many contiguous areas of trees. I I had John Ellsworth telling me that there's not that much left. Well, to me, that's actually why we should do it, because there ain't that much left, right? So, but on the on the other side, right, there were some really important parts to this, right? One, you know, how much unnecessary regulation do we put in there? The the fact that the cost would be unfairly put on a small minority minority of developers. Just trying to channel the actual feedback, this is not in any way sort of my opinion. But, you know, we tried to be as impartial on the feedback that we receive and sort of just projected as it was, right? And so so given all of this feedback, it was clear that we needed to continue to have a little bit of a conversation. We weren't quite ready, you know, on on this topic. So some of the things that we we are planning to do, April sixth, we're going to have another open forum, which will talk both about actually this structure, you know, why we're doing what we're doing, but have a really open conversation with residents on what it is that they would like to see from sustainability and and where they they want to focus, what are their priorities. But then specific to the tree bylaw, you know, really think about whether it is an individual tree bylaw. Do we want to consider what should be the area of impact? Should we maybe focus on low-impact development rather than just a tree bylaw? You know, consider sort of the nuances behind specific provisions, you know, and and the kind of cost that 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 might incur. I have invited as many of the folks that are in the building community to to come and join that that forum as well. And I'll I'll make that invitation to all of you, as well as any residents that might be listening. We will be posting more details on it, I'm trying to work through the the logistics with Susan. But we plan to do at least two more of these forums, where we'll try and gather this additional data. In addition to that, you know, we we did hear aloud and clear that we need to find ways not just to protect what's left, but also expand tree cover. So this is where I'd like us to start thinking about the Arbor Day recognition. Some of the programming from D C R, for example, you know, is a fifty-fifty funding match, right? So if we if we put a put a proposal together, the town would have to actually agree to fund fifty percent of it, but then we get fifty percent of the funds from D C R. So so, you know, are we willing to do that? Do we have the budget to do it? I think those are things that we have to sort of work through. That's the bulk of what I wanted to share with you. I've got a little bit of detail, which I've sent to the select board, you know, on what the PACE program is, including the links to mass development. Michael, again, I'm happy to work with anyone on your staff on this. Tree City USA, the the main requirements that that we need, I think we kind of already meet this, but but Becca would be able to guide us better. We have a town forest committee, so I think that qualifies. We also have Becca, you know, that that sort of represents the department. We do have, again, an urban forestry program. I think we probably hit the two per, two dollars per capita budget number on that. And then, you know, you guys would have to basically say, yep, we're going to observe Arbor Day and and do a proclamation. Claudia, I believe Margie's already working on an unofficial pro, Arbor Day celebration for this year, which will be a little smaller, but but we are hoping that next year we'll actually formally be able to do it. Then then that also then sets us up, you know, to really start looking at additional funding sources or the education we want to do. Arbor Day also gets a support on that education. So, you know, it'll sort of help us hit some of those things that that weren't coming through in the tree bylaw. Lot of talking in a lot of fast pace, so I'll pause here, see if you guys have questions, and I'll also let you join me.
Sure, yeah. Sam, did you want to say anything? Well, we're considering our questions or thoughts about, certainly happy to have you here.
Happy to be here. I think Ash really went in depth with everything, so nothing. I will say, I believe we already cover an Arbor Day celebration, because the library does one and they hand out saplings. Because I know Becca has done a lot of work in looking to get us to Tree City.
So the Lions, and I I can't remember, I'm embarrassed that I can't remember her name right now, who passed away. And every year, she would bring saplings for the entire fourth grade class. Ellie, Ellie, thank you, yes.
Oh, greater, that's why I didn't.
Yep, and she, every year, she brought a sampling per student. Now, you know, the one way to kind of expand upon that, right, is some of the things that Margie and I have talked a tiny bit about. But it it certainly, you know, is, I think, an important role in that, and I'm not suggesting that there, we shouldn't be doing things now, but, you know, the way to change the world is through our kids and and through mothers, right? And so I, you know, I think that's really an important part of what we should be doing is trying to work with finding ways to engage students with, kids with that information, right?
I fully agree, yes.
I think you've been having some great conversations with the school as well, and you were trying to put together an art project with them as well on on this?
Yes, I don't know if we're going to make my goal of Earth Month, April, but I've been working with the high school, I've been working with all the principals at the schools, but mainly at the high school. I recently learned through an Eagle Scout project that's going on that at the high school, they go through about a thousand plastic water bottles a month, which gave me nightmares. So trying to work with the Environmental Action Club to sort of, I had an idea for an art installation out of water bottles to show like this is the impact, to educate, because I think the youth is the ones to really capture.
I would agree.
I know the high school, a couple of years ago, I forget which group, was giving out birch trees. So, but that was at least, that was a couple of years ago. You could reach out to them, that, you know, it was in their announcements, you can get a birch tree planted in your yard and so.
I I think it's important for us to do, as a town.
Ash, you may want to get a little closer.
Sorry, as a town to sort of make that proclamation and and actually make it a a little bit more formal, right? So I'm thrilled that we have a lot of grassroots sort of observation. But, you know, I I think whenever we step up as a town and as town leadership to to sort of formally recognize, you know, things like this, I I think it has an impact, right? And I think we've we've started celebrating Earth Day now in a much more consistent format, I think that makes a difference. Green up Ashland makes a difference, right? Things like these actually matter, so.
One of the things I wondered about too is, you know, we have our select board grants coming up, and I wondered if like the Sustainability Committee might be able to apply for one in which then you could use those monies maybe for some education in the schools and and perhaps we could purchase some, you know, some prizes? Because one of the things that Margie had brought to me was, you know, a contest, I think a poster contest. You know, so maybe they could be, you all could be an applicant for one of our grants.
Candidly, Claudia, we have applied for 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 one that 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 we couldn't really get through, and and the goal was education. And I think this is where we run into the, there's, it's it's a fully, much like any other town group, right? It's a fully volunteer group and, you know, there there are, there's a lot of passion around around different topics, but when it gets to, you know, actually doing things like this, it it requires a slightly different effort and mentality. I'm great at doing this, not that great at at setting setting things up. So having now Sam here, I think we've managed to get get a little bit more progress there. But I think this is where we also need to sort of maybe look at, is the Sustainability Committee the right group? Or or, you know, places like Energize Ashland are are is a group? I think we're good at ideation and maybe the the strategic think on things, not always the best executors, right? So so, yeah.
Just in response to that, what I what I think we found with some groups is, we have the Upper Charles Trail Committee, but they also have the Friends of the Upper Charles Trails, who is a five oh one three C, who is doing some of the fundraising, is doing some of the things like that. Because to Claudia's point about a grant, if we wanted to give money to the Sustainability Committee, it wouldn't go through. If it goes through the B A A grant, it couldn't be from our runner's money, it would be have to be from our select board gift account.
Right, that's what I was referencing.
Because they're not a five oh one three C.
No, I was referencing those.
But if you have another group that is looking to become a nonprofit to support what you're doing, that's a different story.
And I think that's that's the goal with Energize Ashland is as a group. I I I don't think they've, they're quite at the stage where they've applied for things, but they're they're putting together Rob Mullinbeek, and and that team has done a ton of work. So I'm not going to try and take credit for it, right? That's where the credit really lies, right?
For now, I was thinking the gift account, because I didn't think that you'd be able to pull up being a five oh one C in town, so.
But there's still, what is it, a thousand? We could also make an exception if we want, right?
So I'm I'm thrilled that, like, first of all, thank you for your presentation tonight, because this is, this is great to have sort of a real kind of like formal update, because obviously we've been kind of talking here and there, and it's good to kind of see holistically what you guys have been working on. So thank you for for that first, and thank you to Sam for all her work too. You know, I I had a question, you know, in my, when I was like prepping for the meeting tonight, I was like, you know, what does Energize Ashland do? What are its goals? I'm glad to hear sort of like this education component, because I remember a few years ago, we did like our citizen survey. And sustainability was like, I think, our number two, like, priority that residents had. But I think, like, I don't know if I said this to you, or if I said this to Margie, or who I've said this to, but I think sustainability is like one of those things that everyone kind of wants, but people don't know how to get there. And I think, like, for for a net zero goal, you have to, like, it has to be grassroots.
It has to.
It has to be, because you have to change behavior, you have to educate people. And I'm a marketing and salesperson, and I'm going to be the first to tell you, it takes like six times to get a message across before people change behavior. Like, it's, it's, it takes a while. And so, you know, really to make a difference, you know, you were talking about like buildings and transportation, for to make changes, the the education component is, has to be huge. Because, like, for instance, like, one of my neighbors, who I adore, cut all their trees down in their front yard. I think because they didn't, yeah, I know, the face, I know, I, that's like my face too. Because they didn't want to deal with the leaves, but it's like, how do you educate people?
Now you have to deal with the lawn.
Right, so so, you know, it's, you know, how how do you tell people about getting programmable thermostats? So, and what the what the rebates might be, so people are more likely to change their behavior.
Right.
So, like, that grassroots stuff, I think, is going to be key, because, like, I I love, I love what you guys are doing, but like, if if you focus only on top-down, it's not going to be, it's not going to be successful.
Couldn't agree with you more.
So, you know, I I I feel like, you know, the, you know, I'm hopeful that the work that Energize Ashland's going to do in conjunction with the sustainability. Like, I I, like, I'm, like, hopefully that creates that 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 sort of grassroots effort.
And and you're right, Brandy, I think we consistently hear that's a high priority. But the the reality also is with the problem that we are facing, it needs to be a marriage of the top-down and the grassroots, right? Because something like making changes to 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 building codes or or doing sustainable development, that's not a grassroots thing, that has to be driven by by something like the Sustainability Committee, which which is, I think, where we are best positioned to to make an impact, right? Or whether it's a public safety building, Joe, when we work with you, right? That that's the stuff that has to be done in the agencies of something like a community committee, because you're going to have to have that depth of knowledge and and the time and the effort. And, you know, you also are spending a lot of time, you know, with with sort of the legislative side of things, right? Because it sort of has to be done either at the state level or at the town level. But the grassroots stuff is where I think we've been semi-engaged, right? You know, I'm I'm consistently at at things like farmers' markets and and Earth Day events and all that, where I I I absolutely adore speaking to kids and and I get very excited, but that takes you only so far, right? So that's where I do think that having a grassroots organization like like Energize Ashland will will make a lot of difference. But again, I'd I'd rather have them come and talk to me about what their charter is and.
And they should get, and like Claudia was talking about, like, they should get plugged into what's happening in our schools. And and really, I mean, honestly, like, I keep thinking about, like, the 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 Environmental Action Club at the high school. Like, those kids should be a huge part of what Energize Ashland is. And if they're not, then it's a missed opportunity.
And maybe like task them or another group, or find a science teacher who would want to, you know, help us become a Tree City, right?
Well, the Tree City thing, again, is something that we have to do as, you you would have to do something with the PACE program, something, you would have to do something with it, right? Once you get that, then actually putting the program together.
Ash, can I, I just, when you started talking about administrative help and town resources, I mean, you have Sam and Becca's our tree warden, I mean, and, you know, I'm looking at kind of Michael here, but we do have staff that can help with this kind of thing right now.
We're starting to leverage that a little bit more. The the kind of support that I was talking about early on is like when you were doing the comprehensive plan, for example, we actually do have a consultant, for example, helping you with that. With the sustain, with the with the net zero plan, we really did engage, you know, at that time with 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 the consultant.
We have a sustainability coordinator.
Hindsight twenty twenty, right? Maybe that would have been a good idea. We spent a lot of time, a whole year, doing our own research and putting together the plan now. We've now brought that plan and and had M A P C look at that plan. In fact, Framingham's actually been learning from us, like, we did okay, but it took us a year plus to get there. We probably could have shortened that.
Yeah, Ash, I I guess my point is, so we we are undergoing, there's a lot of budget issues, I don't know how many. So I would say one of the things to look at, you know, what resources you have now and what you can do with it. And maybe there's grants or things like that. But I would just be careful about, you know, if you need additional administrative support or costs, that that's going to be difficult.
I I appreciate that, Rob, which is why we haven't come back to you. We've actually been super conscious about it, so as as a committee, I don't think we've really come back to you with, we need X, Y, Z.
Right.
If I come back to you, this is just me being a little bit, as as the chair of the committee, being a little bit reflective on sort of where I think we have successes and where I think we have challenges. You know, again, I'm just speaking truth to you. I think that's an area that that we need to do something about. If you ask me right this second, where would you want money? I'm not ready for that conversation, because I want to be a lot more thoughtful about that ask.
Just quickly add another thing, I'd say, make sure you're reviewing the the net zero plan and and looking at the really significant things. And I know that trees are important, and I support that whole concept. But are we are we doing the other step-by-step things that are, that we went through and have in the net zero plan? So that I would just, just kind of.
The the twelve to twenty-four thing that I showed you, those are things that are coming right out of the net zero plan. And in fact, the activities that I showed you are a combination of things that we need to do, you know, across. Each one of these elements exists on the net zero plan, so I just pulled out the things that are now near-term priority focus versus things like, you know.
And I had, just, excuse me, one other question occurred, I read the newsletter. And I remember whenever Source came out with this pilot program for heat pumps in neighborhood networks, and we didn't get it, they were supposedly doing it in Framingham. Are you saying now we actually have an ongoing project to do that?
Yeah, Sam can talk to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So we don't have.
And which is the neighborhood?
So that's the whole question. When I applied for it, a firm was like, Main Street would be great. And I said, don't touch Main Street, we're not taking up Main Street for a network geothermal anytime soon. But I had just applied for a feasibility study to see where in Ashland, if we did a network geothermal, where it could happen. We unfortunately didn't get that, but we received funding just to do community outreach and education about it, which we we just received, so I haven't fully thought of how we're going to do, how we're going to leverage that. But I think getting just community outreach and education towards it.
Well, that's an exciting possibility, I think, you know.
Definitely, and it allows people who can't afford it to have access to it, which I think is huge.
Thanks.
Definitely work across departments. Because if you're looking to get education out, obviously, Michael puts out his weekly newsletter. Beth Reynolds through the Economic Development Department puts something out on a regular basis. So this is one of those places where we don't want sustainability to work in a silo. We want you to work across departments, especially if you're looking to do education, would be a recommendation. Question for one of you, and and again, this is just me. So regarding the tree bylaw, it's been discussed that, okay, it's great that you're looking at this, but should we look at working on it as part of the comprehensive plan?
Yeah.
Right, so rather than saying, okay, we're going to create this tree bylaw, we're going to bring it to the town meeting in the fall, obviously, you've decided not to put it in the spring, but as we're having the discussion with the public regarding the comprehensive plan, and we'll then have an implementation phase of the comprehensive plan, is part of that, could that be partly sustainability and say, okay, as part of our comprehensive plan, we're looking at sustainability across all the factors of the comprehensive plan, would then a tree bylaw or some other, the electrification or things like that, be part of the discussion and part of the implementation plan of the comprehensive plan, rather than trying to do it now before the comprehensive plan is completed?
It's 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 an excellent question, you'll learn, and and, you know, Chuck Chuck is is on on the comprehensive plan. In fact, we've got, we've got actually a couple of members, because Kara, who's representing the forest committee, also is a member of of my committee. So so kind of feel like we've got some representation there. I think there are certain aspects that, especially on our longer-term roadmap, that are absolutely have to be part of the comprehensive plan. So when we think about green zones, for example, so when when we get into that zoning type of conversation, you know, I think there was an email today from Michael Kane as well, suggesting about, you know, how should we develop the the rail transit district? Talking about the kind of development that we want, whether it's more cluster development or or, you know, whether it's, you know, situated around Main Street, and and what does that nature look like? I think all of those have heavy sustainability implications, and I think sort of belong there. The reason why the tree bylaw sort of went the direction that it did, and I think probably there is some element of it that probably should still happen, is, again, because of timing, more so than anything else. We've got maybe, we've got some very narrow parcels left. One of our challenges, Brandy, very honestly, is going to be, I think, one of our biggest parcels is that rail transit district, right? Where where we're going to put the Y and this thing. So there's a conversation that needs to happen as to what's more important, and then how can? what's more important. And then, how can we ensure that when we build the Y, we reduce, and I think aspirationally, all of us are gonna kind of aim at that and say, when we build that thing, it should be built in a very sustainable manner so that we reduce the impact, right? Uh, of, of whether it's the trees or, you know, building in, uh, energy features into it, right? Um, frankly, part of the goal of doing things like the bylaw is to ensure that that conversation keeps happening, right? So yes, there's a grassroots conversation that needs to happen. Sometimes having these conversations, whether they go to town meeting or not, the fact that we're having the conversation actually puts it back into your minds, my mind, someone else's mind, that this is something important. So sometimes we, we, you know, we're gonna make that call and kind of say, yes, this is an important enough discussion to have. Whether it makes the, whether it makes it to the level of, yes, we have enough support to town meeting or not, sometimes it's almost, uh, 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 you know, side effect of, of that conversation. To me, the conversation we're having is worth it in and of itself, right?
And certainly.
Uh, and then, then whether we position it as part of the comprehensive plan, when we do it, I think those are all things that we can, we can figure out.
Okay.
All right.
Good. Thank you.
Sorry, long-winded answer, but.
No, it's good.
Yeah, it's good. And thanks for bringing them in. I think that's timely and so hopefully we've got some.
Certainly hope that I've answered the questions on the opt-in code, uh, and, and that, that, that we'll have an easier time with that.
Yeah, just, do we anticipate um, bringing them back again for the opt-in code specifically, or we think we're probably good with that?
My, my suggestion is, like, I know last year, I think you were here about the same time last year when we had this discussion about the opt-in code. And I think, I know that there was confusion from our board. I know that there was obviously confusion at town meeting. Um, and I know you mentioned you were gonna have a public forum and you're gonna just ask for general feedback on stuff, but I would be very, very clear, like, how you present that and make sure, I think, if I remember correctly, Steve Mitchell a year ago basically said, present like what it means to your average homeowner. Because, because people need to actually get their brain around what that means. So if there is no impact to your average homeowner, be very clear about that. Because I think if, the more clear you are in a public forum, um, before you go into town meeting and you hear the, the questions that come from that public forum, the better equipped you're gonna be to, to handle town meeting.
And I would just, you know, to follow up on that, I, you laid out a very ambitious agenda for your public forums. I, I think you might wanna think about focusing it a bit, 'cause you've got only so much time with people and opportunities, so.
It's fair.
Yeah.
I, I think, but when it comes to the opt-in code, this time around, at least, I don't have to sit there and explain passive home and fires and hers ratings, which, which I had to deal with the last time, right? Even, even ourselves trying to understand it, what's forty-five, what's, what's, hers forty, doesn't matter. It, it already applies to us. There, there are three things that we get from the specialized code right now. It's those three things. It's three points. That's it.
Right.
Okay.
It's, it's as clean as that.
Great. Well, thank you.
But I would, to, to, to Brandy's point, when you do your session on April sixth, if you're gonna talk about this, be very clear.
Yep.
And maybe have two different forums, right? It looks like you're doing one on a Saturday morning. Maybe offer one on an evening that's via Zoom.
Fair.
That, again, work with Susan in regards to a Zoom account and what you can do. Because there are a lot of people who might be interested, but who may not either have the time or energy or willingness to come to a meeting on a Saturday morning.
That, that's, that's good feedback.
Yeah.
I'll also say the ABA, ABA was very kind enough to actually post the conversation I had with them on, on YouTube as well. So there's a recording available that's effectively talks a lot about this with the people that probably care the most about it.
So with any luck, I don't think we need to have them back for this.
Yeah, I'm, I'm telling you right now, I intend to put this thing out there.
Yeah, we'll put it, and I think, I think we'll support it. All right.
All right, lovely.
Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody. That's good.
Thanks.
Of course.
All right. So the next item on the agenda, and I apologize, this is running, really, we've been running late, but this is, I think we're putting these two together, the enterprise funds and the potential increase in the water sewer rates. And I see Brittany and Dan are here, so you folks just wanna come up, um, when you're, whenever you're ready?
Clearing up.
Yeah. Um, you guys, wake up. So.
This is, this is one of those things, right? You plan a certain amount of time for something and those dog hearings just are tricky.
Yeah.
No, I saw the dog hearing.
You were here for that, so.
I was ready. You knew.
I knew.
So, yeah, so, um, we're here to talk about the enterprise funds and really, I think, focus on some of the infrastructure needs um, associated with those enterprise funds, specifically water and sewer to a certain extent. Uh, we're also here to talk about the trash, uh, enterprise fund as well. So as you know, uh, you're not unfamiliar with this. Um, Ashland has had a history, not just over the last few years, but over decades of really putting off capital, um, expenditures, capital improvements. And unfortunately, when you do that, you have these situations where the bill eventually comes due and they all come due at once. And so that is kind of partially some of the prospects that we're facing right now. And so, um, Brittany is, you know, taking into account some of those capital needs, has put together a, a forecast and then also put together a rate suggestion, um, which looks at increasing rates, um, in some cases substantially. I mean, you're just no shying away from it. Um, so with that, I would turn it over to Brittany and, and Dan Maurer. Everybody, I think everybody knows Brittany, but Dan Maurer's our water sewer foreman from the DPW. Um, just excellent, uh, excellent resource for us, excellent, uh, excellent member of our staff, so.
All right, thank you. I'm not sure if there's a particular fund you would like to start with or any one of them.
Well, maybe a present, I'm not sure, you know, I, I personally am not, I didn't have much time to really review this. And I don't know if people are specific, but maybe kind of a general presentation to kind of prep us for, uh, you know, further discussions about this. Does that make sense?
I, I would suggest the water fund because that is so, um, so comprehensive and we have a tendency to lose steam as the night goes on, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just, I have a short memo to just pass out. It's a revised memo, just based upon.
Just revised from the February sixteenth one.
Yes, it's just based upon new information, so.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, let's.
Different to the good?
Everything good, I thought.
You can just give them all and we'll pass it down. It'll be easier.
Thanks, good.
So I'm not sure if anyone had the time to read the, uh, original memo.
Yes.
Um, so obviously, in doing the forecasts and the budgeting, we take into account the usage over the last year. We take into account capital, um, inflation, the developments as best as we can to forecast those in. Um, we don't have the growth that we once had in the past and there's a few developments that are unpredictable. We don't know when they're gonna come online, but we did the best we could with, um, those assumptions. Um, so the, the revised memo that I gave you, the recommendation for water would be to increase the rate twenty-one percent. And that would be a dollar increase to the tax bill of fifty dollars for residents. Um, we're looking at closing a deficit in water of around four hundred and eighty-seven thousand for FY twenty-five. So that twenty-one percent increase in water would cover that deficit completely just for FY twenty-five. Now further, on the first page of the memo, you'll see that there are just a few options given as to if you increase the rate by fifteen percent, it'll generate this much in revenue. We could tap into retained earnings this much and so forth. There's, there's a host of different scenarios that we could look at. Um, but just to give you an idea, now, a big driver of that increase is the fact that usage has been down over the last couple of years. Um, we've had a few droughts in the last four or five years that I can remember, major droughts. Um, and then we've also had substantial rain in last year and the year before. So either people couldn't use water because we had water bans, or they didn't have to use water because it was raining so much. Um, so I have noticed that usage has gone down over the last couple of years, even with the developments that we've had come online. So the usage is down and then also we have a big project that needs to get done, which is the ozone project. It is a four million dollar project. And the new information that was received is that Hopkinton would cover twenty-five percent of it. Probably over the next few years, and we're confident that they will get reimbursed by them in those two years. So that would reduce the borrowing from four million to three million. Um, and then also, we initially in the first um, budget of water, I tried lumping together the water main replacement. So we just had to do maybe two big borrowings instead of a few borrowings, but just for the rate sake and borrowing sake and timing and workload of the DPW, it was best to, to still phase them out. Um, so if you have any information on the, or questions on the ozone project, the big project, that's why I have my buddy, Dan here, to answer any questions you have on any of the capital projects that are in the original memo, anyway.
So Brittany, just a quick question. I haven't had a chance to, but your rate includes uh, funding the capital projects on some sort of schedule or, or not?
Yes. So there are, there are capital projects that are funded within the operating budget itself. Um, on attachment A of the new memo, on the FY twenty-five line, the capital is funded at three hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that covers multiple capital items. That's in the previous.
Does it cover the big one?
No. So the big one would be a, a borrowing. So that would cover the debt service.
Well, that's what I mean. So the rate includes the debt service?
Yes, it does, yes.
That's what I, that's what I was getting at.
Yes. So then the debt service would be factored into, obviously, the forecast.
Okay.
And then so would the rate increase.
So I don't know, what's this, this, do, do we wanna hear from Dan now, or do you guys wanna talk more about?
I mean, if you have questions on the ozone project, I mean.
The information that we got was very detailed. I would just say that I wish we had seen the report when it came out in July. I mean, I think it was mentioned that you might have something.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but now having to read that as well as all the other stuff, as well as figure this out.
Right.
Um, that, that's the only thing I would say, is that had we seen it earlier, it would have been good to be a little bit more aware. I mean, we've been discussing, okay, we might have to do these projects, we might have to do these projects.
Right.
And what I would say is look, looking at your memo, it does talk about the deficits going into the, the, the out years.
Yes.
What I, and I think I saw something about some capital outlay in the out years as well. It would have been good to sort of see this again back in the summer, as we were talking about last year's budget and even, and then going into this year. That's my only comment about that project. But it looked very detailed about what was needed, what the equipment was gonna be, how you were gonna do it. Um, I know it's been a while for me since I've been in the water treatment plant. Part of me almost wants to say, okay, can we do another tour just to take a look and see? And then I think that would be a better way for us to understand and then explain it to the public why this is needed.
Right. Sure.
So my question to you. So my question to you is, like, reading your new attachment A, um, at the very bottom, it's saying there's, there's a deficit of fourteen thousand eight hundred and seventy-four. So that's, so we're still running out of deficit?
That was FY twenty.
I thought that's, I thought that was what I was looking at.
Yeah, that was FY.
Oh, it was twenty-three?
Yeah, that was FY twenty-three, actual. So we did run into a small deficit in twenty-three. And that was where when usage was budgeted, I thought usage was coming a lot more and unfortunately it just hasn't come in the way we thought. Usage is based, so I run a bunch of reports.
Yeah.
Consumption reports, and it's based upon the previous year. Then I also look at a trend.
Okay.
But it's hard to look at trends when you have droughts and substantial rain and you just have to do your best and hope that revenue comes in.
Okay. So I'm looking at, so I, I'm just a little confused because I'm looking at what was in our packet for debt service and there's a bar chart and.
Yep.
Um, and I'm trying to reconcile what is for the debt service, which I assume includes ozone. And then the capital outlay is actually less. So now for FY twenty-five, it's three seventy-five. Is that?
So the capital outlay would be funded with cash, so that wouldn't be included in the debt service chart.
Okay.
And then also the debt service chart would have needed to be updated because that was the original
Okay.
debt service chart that I put together. I didn't, um, redo the entire memo.
Okay.
Um, I just redid it based upon the information that we got from Hopkinton.
Okay.
That the IMA was gonna be extended and.
And so because the, because Hopkinton's going to now be paying a million dollars, that debt service would look different.
It would look different. It won't necessarily tie to, yeah, I just, I didn't rerun all of the, the graphs and numbers and all that.
And just one other question. So looking at sort of the trend of the, the one that was in our packet, so obviously it would need to get redone, but so is ozone the only major capital outlay project that we're gonna need to, because it, it, it's looking like the debt service goes up? Like new debt, debt service? So, you know, I'm thinking, you know, I, you know, twenty-one percent this year, but I'm trying to wrap my brain around like what, what is coming, what is coming our way because I, yeah, I just, I, you know, ob- obviously if,
Yes.
Obviously, we have, we haven't invested in the, in the infrastructure. We, you know, we're also currently under like a, um, a sewer moratorium and I assume part of that is like looking at what the capacity is and all that other stuff and possibly making more recommendations down the road. So I'm just trying to wrap my brain around like what's, what's sort of like the immediate need and then what is, what is like the longer-term outlook?
So if you look at this last page of the new memo?
Last page of new memo, okay. Sorry, I'm just.
It's okay. No, it's fine. It's a lot of data and it's late.
Yeah, okay. All right. So I'm looking at.
Yes, attachment B.
Okay.
So down below, we've tried, we were able to push out a few projects such as the um, inspection and repainting of the Cedar Street tank at one point seven million.
Okay.
And twenty-seven, but that would be a major capital project. Um, the pump station upgrades at five hundred thousand.
Okay.
The repainting of the Woodridge tank of six hundred thousand that we've pushed out for several years now.
Okay.
Um, along with the Cedar Street tank.
Okay.
The water mains, we've been pushing out borrowing for.
Yeah.
And the ozone is, and that just came up in the last year.
Okay.
So the ozone is the priority that has to get done.
Okay.
We don't have a choice. The water mains, they've been fixing as they come along.
Yeah.
And we, we really should have a, you know.
A plan.
A plan.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And fund it.
So kind of going along those lines of planning, you know, kind of longer term, more than just, you know, this year. And I, and this is great. This is awesome. Like, I'm glad, like, this is helpful.
Mm-hmm.
Um, like, I'm wondering, you know, the state, and I, I know, I know what the, the answer to this is gonna be, but you know, the state knows that towns need to replace their infrastructure, that we're probably not the only town that has to look at this stuff. And I know Mass Works does, like, they do Mass Works grants for these types of projects, correct? No?
Mass, no, Mass Works does fund infrastructure projects like this. Um, for sure. And, and one of the things that we talked about recently is, you know, combining some of these projects, like water, especially the water main replacements,
or specifically the water main replacements,
with paving, uh, you know, repaving roads and sidewalks and putting it on the tip.
Okay.
So the tip will not, uh, tip program won't.
That's great.
Yeah, it's, it's not soon and it won't pay for the, um, all of the water stuff, but it would pay for like the paving part of this component.
Okay.
Which, uh, would be a significant cost, you know, a couple hundred grand probably per.
Okay.
So.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of like ways that.
I think that there's grants out there, DPW will go for them. They'll, they'll go for them.
Yeah, okay.
Any funding source that we can get our hands on, we can, will get.
Okay.
Um, hopefully some of the developments move along a little bit faster and I can include them in the forecast.
Okay.
Uh, so I don't have necessarily a, a three or five-year plan for the funds. It's more so taking it a year at a time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And kind of like a wait and see.
And, and we are, we are looking at different options. So for example, this ozone replacement, we're throwing a hail mary pass and seeing if we can get that covered under some of the PFAS.
Oh, yeah.
It's a.
Pass.
Slim.
Yeah.
But we're, we've, you know, preparing that application.
Trying.
Worth asking, worth trying.
Brittany, before we hear from Dan in terms of these questions, Joe?
I'm good, thanks.
Okay.
Dan, I saw, I saw, I've seen the report and I've talked to Doug after some of the traffic meeting studies that we, committee meetings we have. And it's, it's no different than the Public Safety Building. I'll compare it to that. We've waited and waited and waited and time, you know, Band-Aid it, Band-Aid it, and now it's time to be replaced. You know, if we did these things, you know, two or three years ago, it wouldn't be half as, half as expensive. So the townspeople need to be aware of that. It's no different than that Public Safety Building, you know? So it's either pay me now or pay me later type of deal. And I get it, and there's something that needs to be done. We all need water and an ozone treatment facility is, is vital. So it's, it's not something we can live without, so.
Before, I just had some quick questions for, I'm just curious, did you think that Hopkin and wouldn't pay for that? For the, like what, what was that?
So at first I was, sometimes I was skeptical, it's just that we didn't have, I was skeptical, I was pessimistic. We didn't have the.
I mean, you're still using the water, right?
Yeah, the agreement ended though literally in February of twenty-four.
Okay.
And without a signed new agreement and something in writing.
Well, and because they've talked about doing their own wastewater.
They've talked about opting out. You know, or connecting with the NWRA, so.
And then in their extension, they do have a provision where they can opt out with a six months notice. But they have told Ashland that they're not planning on doing that for about two to three years.
Okay.
And this project would be done before then.
Great, okay, well, that's good.
And so that agreement actually will come before this board, probably at your next meeting.
Okay.
Because Hopkinton has signed it. And I believe, Brittany, correct me if I'm wrong, so Hopkinton is looking at going at their town meeting, getting an appropriation to support their portion.
They are, from what I know, they're looking for, to get authorization for a nine hundred and fifty thousand dollar. They would have to borrow the money, borrowing.
Right.
Yeah.
And just another quick question, when was the last time we raised the water sewer fees? I know we, it was like two years ago, was it?
Last year.
I will tell you.
No, it was last year, but it's, it's averaged over one percent, a one percent increase over seven years. So you only raised them twice in the last seven years and that's what it averages out to be.
Yeah, the last seven years it averaged out too. It was a five percent increase in two thousand and twenty-three and then a two and a half percent increase in two thousand and seventeen. So it averaged one percent over the last seven years.
And, and I remember when we had a discussion last year, there was discussion about, well, we really should be doing more because we have some capital. But we didn't have all the information, that report that obviously came out last summer. We didn't have that last year to make some of these decisions. So now having that information where we need to be doing these major capital projects and we just are not, we're, we're not, we're not being, being able to pay our bills based on what we're charging. So we need to look at changing that.
You know what might be helpful, just to hear from Dan of what this ozone project is for people that are watching that haven't had all the detail that we've, just, I think it would be helpful.
No, that's, that's what I was going to say.
If you wouldn't mind, thank you.
So, so the ozone is, is our like primary treatment process at, at the treatment plant. That gets rid of all our iron and magnes. And it's our first line of defense against any, your bacterias or anything that's bad in the water. So that starts the, the process. And it works very well. We have, we have very clean water coming out of the plant, which we didn't have years ago, prior to the plant being here. And the plant said at that twenty-year mark where its life expectancy is, it's, it's reaching the end of its life expectancy. And it's just kind of deteriorated. There is a backup process to it, but it's not going to be as clean. So we used to be able to shut the ozone off during the winter months. We, we could shut it down for a little bit, but due to changes in the reservoir, we can't do that. I don't know if you remember a few years back, right around Christmas time, November, we had a lot of water quality color complaints. That was, we'd shut the ozone system down for a couple of months like we typically did in the, in the, in the wintertime. And just that little bit of color coming back in from, you know, the, the iron and magnes triggered all that because people are used to very clean, clear water. So our secondary system is a ferric chloride. It's not as effective, you know? So, so we do have a plan B. If, if the ozone was to fail completely, we can still continue to run the treatment plant, but it's not going to be to the level that we can run it with the ozone.
And are there byproducts of the, of the backup system that aren't there with the ozone system?
It's just not as effective as stripping everything out of the water, that, you know, all the minerals and, and the iron magnes that causes that color complaint.
And iron magnes itself is more of an aesthetic issue than it is a health issue, right? I, I remember years ago when, when summer would roll around and you'd fill your bathtub, it would have definitely a very orange tint. And at that time I had done research and so it, it, it is more of an aesthetic issue than.
Yeah, it's required in everybody's diet to have iron magnes.
Yeah, right.
It's not a harmful thing.
Just you don't want to.
It's just not.
See it when you drink it, right?
When you fill up your tub and you get that.
Yeah, I, I get it, I remember, believe me.
What's going on?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you remember a couple of years ago, actually, when we actually needed to interject more ozone into the system.
We had to turn the system back on.
We had to, yeah, excuse me, turn the system on during like the wintertime.
So typically in the wintertime, we were able to shut it off for two or three months because the clarity.
Because of the temperature, right, of, in the wintertime?
Just the nature of the reservoir, we didn't get as much iron magnes in our raw water. So we were able, we didn't have to strip it out.
But is that related to the temperature of that, of the water? It seems to me that, I remember that it might be and that, you know, is that too a climate change thing?
There's been a lot of changes up by the treatment plant with, you know, the development that went up in there that changed how the waters, you know, we've had a full reservoir for two years, which the eight years that I've been here, we haven't had.
Right, yeah, right.
You know, so a lot of things have changed up there. So with that, the chemical process, we've seen change, our raw water has changed. We have a lot more iron and magnes in it. So we're, we're going through a lot more chemicals to, to get the water to the quality that we had it before.
Quick question with respect to that. The projects that are being done now off of High Street, House Street in Hopkinton, is that affecting our water, the, the water supply with some of that runoff coming down into the reservoir? Okay, is there any?
What are you talking about?
Legacy farms.
Legacy farms.
Legacy farms?
So is there any way of trying to get some funding out of the owners of that property as a result of their runoff?
Because, yeah, we, we've looked at that. It's, you know, we have, we feel like there's a strong correlation between what's happened there and some of this. But scientifically and legally proving that is, is a little bit more difficult.
Well, and our conservation committee and our conservation agent has been working on this and we've done some orders of, you know, conditions and things like that.
Entered into, the board actually entered into a settlement agreement for some of that stuff.
With Hopkinton and with the developer.
But this is the one over fifty-five development. You're not talking about any others or?
Well, this is the, the latest or last phase of legacy farms.
I think that is over fifty-five.
Yeah, that, my understanding from looking at it years ago, there's one development right up hill overlooking the.
Right.
Yeah, the reservoir, it's over fifty-five.
But there's not others, I guess that's what I, it's just this one that we're talking about.
Whatever the ones are that are right down the street that are right, yeah.
Now, there, there's some kind of water, I don't know what you call it, to absorb the water there now and redirect it?
Well, yes, now they've made some improvements.
The runoff, right?
Yeah, like swales and.
Yeah, well, and those, those green tubes that I think absorb water, right?
That's just to catch the silt coming in. But they've redesigned their detention basins up there to expand them, to make them bigger so that they're capable of.
So the runoff isn't as bad?
In theory.
Ideally.
In theory.
The other day I noticed when I drove down there, it, there's an area up there, it looks like it's set up to just run right down to.
Right.
I mean, there's, it's all rock and everything, right?
It's gone from very small tributaries that, that we could get rain for a couple of days and we didn't see anything. We have a little tributary that runs underneath the driveway for the treatment plant.
Yeah, yeah.
And we could have rain for a few days, we wouldn't see anything come through there.
Yep.
Now, as soon as we get rainfall, it's, it's running right through.
Well, that's not, how is that allowed? The, the regulations are that you're not supposed to increase that count, you're supposed to have detention retention.
The way the DEP has configured our, our tier, tiers of, of protection are, are very interesting. So they, they kind of hug the, the street line in one direction and in the other direction they go out like you would expect them to.
So how much of what we're talking about is due to this development? I mean, that's my, are we, are we increasing our rates or doing more capital investment because these guys built that thing there and we didn't control it properly?
The ozone effectively just, in its nature, its inherent nature, it's eating itself up because it's, it's doing its job. So after twenty years of doing its job, it's, it's just, we have a bunch of little pinholes in all the piping where the ozone's leaking out. We've kind of put Band-Aid repairs on it.
So that's like a regular, that's an expected, right?
Operations maintenance, it's just, that's expected.
Though, though it sounds like what's going on in the winter where you can't turn the ozone off anymore.
Correct.
That could be climate change, additional water in this reservoir, things like that.
And like Michael had said, that, that's, it's one thing, we have our data that shows everything's changed, but try and prove that in, in a court. I mean, it's just.
Well, I think, I think, well, at least for me, I think it's important to know what we're considering that is potentially due to this development. So we could at least understand, and it's late now, but I mean, I've been concerned about this development and how it got allowed and how it's, we're basically paying for it and ask the residents to pay for it. And I, I think it'd be useful to know what of all this is potentially due to that and review our avenues of action.
Yeah, though I don't, I, I think we want to be careful though, right? I think the understanding that, yes, we're seeing some impact, but my understanding is the ozone system is twenty years old.
Well, that's, that's potentially not part of it.
That's not, and that's the major part. I mean, I think in regards to, I mean, unless we're having to use more chemicals and that's why our price needs to go up, but.
That's why I think it'd be useful to have that info, like what is, what is potentially due to this and what isn't? I mean, I think this is outrageous.
I think to your point, Rob, the, the question really is long-term, what's going to be the impact of that development and the runoff to our.
Because we're asking people to pay for it. I mean, like, why are we in that position?
I mean, the ozone we have to do anyways, I think that's clear, right? But, but in the long run, what, what is this runoff potentially going to, how it's going to impact our?
All the capital work that we're proposing, that's, that has no effect. This is, this is stuff that has been getting kicked down the road for years. This, this is not a legacy farm issue.
So I just, just to repeat, I just think it'd be good to segregate what's kind of regular, long-term capital and, and what's cost potentially associated with this development.
Well, as Dan just said, none of it.
None of it?
None of this, none of these capital.
Well, and the other stuff in general then, whatever.
Operations costs in chemicals and extended runtime with the filters and stuff like that. So that'll creep up on us over a period of time, but that's not the capital that we're, we're looking to prepare now.
I'm talking about costs in general that we're passing on. And that's what I want to see, you know, what is, what is the impact of this thing? And what should, action should we be taking that maybe we're not taking, you know, as a result of that? Because I think we have that responsibility.
So let me ask a question. So are you, like, do you, it sounds like this is something that's going to start in FY twenty-five as soon as sort of the budget.
As soon as we get funding, we're moving forward.
Okay, so from a timing perspective and a next steps for us, are we okay not voting on this tonight? I think I would, because, because I think the conversation's good and I think, but I'm, I'm not comfortable yet, like, taking a vote.
Yeah, we're not asking for that.
Yeah, we can, not on the agenda.
But I just wanted to make sure, like, from, from your perspective, that, that wasn't something that you guys needed.
Well, it is a good, a good point though. What, what is our kind of timeline?
What's the goal?
So what are we thinking about in terms of future agendas and decision points, I guess?
Well, I, I think, you know, what is the, the pleasure of the board here? I mean, we could certainly have.
Two thousand and twenty-six?
The first meeting in June, Rob?
Yeah, that's a good.
So, or second meeting in May? You know, i- if you have your answers and everything and you feel, I don't want to say comfortable because none of this is comfortable, but feel like you're ready to make a decision, we could do it as soon as the next meeting.
I think we need to put out some, I think we need to put out some, some education, more education to the public.
Motion to go past ten, oh god.
Yes. Tell those in favor of going past ten o'clock.
Aye.
Aye. And I'm amazed, is this grimace looking? All right, so we're going past ten.
Yeah, but, so Brittany, so you need to know before we send out the first, you know, the first bills for, for FY twenty-five.
Right, and I mean, we would obviously need a decision before town meeting.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, I think, I think our next meeting, you know, I, what I would, I mean, I need to look at the updated memo that you've given us. And if you could update some of the other attachments that you didn't get to do with this one and let us have those to look at. And then to Rob's point, if there's a way to look at what are the, what are these long-term capital costs that are related to just general maintenance that we know we need to do? And what are some of the other costs and expenses that we think could be attributed to the change in the input coming into the reservoir from legacy farms? And how is that impact? And then, I mean, I don't know where we're at with the, the IMA with Hopkinton, but is there, I don't know if we can go to them or to the developer and say, our costs are increasing. Can we get additional funding or can you supplement something? I don't know if that's possible, but something to work.
Um, I'll have to go back and review because Lisa did cover this extensively with the board a couple of years ago when you entered into the settlement agreement.
Right.
And I'll just see what that covered. I believe there was some chemical related costs associated with that, Dan?
Not sure what the exact figures were.
Okay.
But there was some mitigation that, that they still haven't completed that they.
Yeah.
Correct.
If you could remind us what that was, that we understand it.
Sure.
Another final question for me anyway is, Dan, this ozone project, does it include updating the backup system?
I've already actually, I've gone through the backup system this, this past summer to make sure it's all up to snuff. It's, everything's where exactly where it needs to be, so if it has to go, we're good to go.
Thank you, appreciate that.
So our next meeting is March twentieth in two weeks, right? Are we thinking, or maybe going to April third, maybe?
Well, as long as that gives us enough time from a budget perspective and getting the budget out and approved.
Oh, you're right.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, March, we're already a few weeks behind anyway, so March twentieth would probably be great. If you need a little bit more time, then I can hustle and get the document together.
But April third might be better?
But if you need April third, if, if you need April third, but we can give you, we can work on getting the information.
I mean, my, my feeling is the sooner we can get this information and make this decision and talk to the public about it, the better. And then.
More information is the best, educating the people, they need to know.
How are you thinking of educating them?
Well, the other thing is, if we just, we can, if we can have the new updated information for our next meeting. And as part of that meeting, have a little further discussion about what some of these costs mean to the public. And then either not do a vote and wait to vote until April third so we can talk about this and get some input from the public, that might be a good way to handle it. What do people think about that?
I think it's the right idea. And Michael could put it in his newsletter about, you know, potential, you know, increases and he has the information to help you with it.
And my other recommendation for you when you're working on the budget is plug in your recommendations and, as, as you're working on the budget. That would be my, you know.
Yep, yeah, a couple, just another thing I think actually would be helpful, maybe for the board, but certainly for the public at large, is, you know, put together a brief presentation with visuals. Like I noticed in some of the reports from Woodard and Curran and Weston Sampson that they had some pictures of our ozone filter. So, you know, a few pictures of that, a few pictures of the water mains. I mean, how many water main breaks do you average on a, on a month, you know? Got plenty of.
And a little history too about, you know, that there really has been a, you know, small, very small minor increases in recent years. I mean, I do think, when we talk about kicking the can down the road, I mean, that's on us. I mean, you'd say it costs you more, yeah, it does, well, it's on, but it's on us, Joe. I mean, yeah, we wait to do stuff, but it's on, it's on us if we're, if that's what we're doing.
Just last year.
Right, that was just last year. But the years before that, we didn't.
And, and I would say too, like, not only like showing the, the increase in water rate, which is, you know, obviously what the residents are paying, but also what we've spent in capital improvements in the water infrastructure. Because.
It's needed.
It's needed, yeah. And drinking water, you know, you, you don't, you don't mess with, you don't mess with drinking water, you don't mess with public health.
So the other part that I found interesting in this, there was a map that just showed, and I'm, I'm not finding it in the packet right now. There was a map that showed, I think, sewage and stuff that had been worked on as well as water mains and things that had been worked. I mean, the list was unbelievably detailed. But, yeah, so there's these maps that were provided in our packets, the sewer system map and I think it was the water sewer system map. Maybe they're all just sewer system maps. When you were talking about the sewer, and it, I forget exactly what detail was on it, but it's pretty intensive, our sewer system and our water system. And our pipes and, and I think sometimes we don't consider that. So I think to, to Claudia's point, some history about how old some of our pipes are and why we're needing some of this capital and infrastructure and.
Okay, so for the next meeting, do you want it more in like a presentation format?
Yeah.
This is, this is a lot of data analysis that if you put it in a presentation, it's not going to be, it's going to be boring. But maybe visuals and some other stuff and.
Give us and the public pictures as to, to, you know, as, as Brandy always says, as, as a marketing person, right? You got to tell them the story.
Okay.
And the fact that we did. And the fact that we did a, a five percent increase last year, but we hadn't done one before that for a, a number of years. And over the last seven years, we've only been doing a one percent increase, and as we know, things have been going up. And the, the discussion that you had about we're not getting in as much because there's not as much usage and.
And development.
Well, developments are, yeah, there's a lot, there's a lot of factors.
Factors, so I think showing us and the public that picture is important.
I think there's a lot of research around pictures too, and people.
I know, people are very big.
Based on a picture versus.
One of, and actually I think one of Brittany's most impactful graphs is showing that the reason. We've been able to keep rates so low and not raise them is because we've deferred our capital expenses over the years.
Yeah.
We've had a declining debt service, we've had the developments over the past couple of years help us out. So we've only had to, it, it was on average that we increased rates one percent.
Yeah.
I mean, do you wanna, it all depends how you look at it. Do you want to raise rates three percent every year to pay for projects in the future? That way it's not a massive jump like it is now, or do, do people want to wait and pay for projects as they come due?
And I think that would be part of our discussion.
Right.
To that point too, in terms of enterprise funds.
Yes.
What, do we have to, we can only raise the amount that it costs to run whatever we're running via the enterprise fund? Is that how that works?
No, I mean, you can raise, you can raise rates more and generate more revenue that, so that at the end of the year, you would have a. A balance that would then go back into what you call retained earnings, so.
Is there a cap on that, or how's that?
So they, they recommend, um, they've changed it, but they recommend to have at least ninety days worth of. Operating expenses and retained earnings, but then they also throw in, well, it also depends on your capital plan.
Right.
So they kind of protect themselves by saying, right, if you have a lot of capital investment you need to do. The more retained earnings you should have. So they don't really tell you, you know.
I'm just wondering, if, if we have, you know, projects like the ozone, right? And you know that that, that has to be done every twenty years, and maybe that one's a little bit out there. But, you know, maybe, you know, you start raising a little bit of money so that, you know, it's just like you save for something you want to buy, right? I mean, you don't, you're not always in the position to do that, we've all probably known that from our personal lives, but.
Sneak up on you and.
And this doesn't seem like it would be the year to be looking to retain funds, but maybe the future.
Who knows, we may have a dry season this year. And that means more people are going to use more water.
Or mix, and you need a mix and then you need no water bans.
That's it, exactly.
It's like a no win up here, you know, you're either in a water ban or you have substantial rain.
Damn if you do.
We still need to do trash too.
But this is, this is just water, there's still sewer and trash.
Alright.
Thank you guys.
I would say sewer can hold off as well, maybe include it as part of the presentation.
Okay, okay.
Next, at our next meeting, because I think they tie together to some extent.
Okay, now what do you want to do about?
Sense? I think trash.
Trash.
Pictures of trash bags?
Duck trash.
We just did the trash bags, that's how.
I know, I know. The unfortunate thing is I only covered one year. And what I have noticed this year, and obviously it hasn't been a full year. Is that the bag sales, like I worried about, are not coming in as expected. So right now, I'm projecting a hundred thousand dollar shortfall just in the bag sales. Now, that could be due for a number of reasons. We don't know if people hoarded the bags.
Well, thanks, Dan.
Um, yes.
They what?
Okay. As long as, okay, so now I know that there'll be, there'll be an influx of purchases the next year. Right, so there could be, people could go out and buy a ton more bags next year, and sales will be back up to where they should be. I just don't have the data to analyze it yet.
Right.
Um, so, that's why I, I did the hybrid approach again, is to a flat fee and, um. I'm not putting it solely on the flat fee, what I would like to do, because it's reliable and we don't have hoarders that.
So I have a couple of questions for you.
Yes.
Um, so as we were looking at, like, the whole, the whole trash. Um, the way we, we currently price it, there's one fee for households, another fee for seniors.
Yes.
Would it be possible, because I know as I'm, I'm, like, it pains me, like, literally pains me to raise the flat fee for everyone. In the same manner.
Yep.
And I get that the seniors are, some of them are especially are on a fixed income, but there are a lot of other people in our town that are also on fixed incomes. And that are struggling. It, would it be possible, instead of doing an age cutoff? For like, levels of payment, to do something that's income-based? Like, is that like even a doable option? Because I feel like that, that.
Like a financial hardship?
It's a financial hardship.
I looked at, I talked about that last year, because again, there are many seniors who can afford higher prices. And I basically was shot down.
I just feel like if there's a way to do it where it's, not necessarily to make seniors at the same rate as everyone else, but to look at, to look at some sort of. Income abatement versus senior abatement. I'm just.
I'm thinking it from a staffing level and into who would review all that, who would obtain all the documentation.
I know, I know. That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking.
What comes to mind, what do you collect? Tax returns, I mean.
I know.
No, I know, I know. What do you collect?
I know, I just, I just feel like. You know.
I mean, there are, there are some of our programs that are financially related, right? Some of the school stuff. Right, you, you get free and reduced, or you get certain things because of your financial situation.
That, that information is, is known by certain individuals and certain, not, not.
Well, free and reduced actually for families is, is used for a lot of things in the schools. It's used for, um, bus fees and, and other things as well, so it might be something that, you know.
Let's see information source.
But there's a, you know, significant staff.
I mean, we have one staffer sent for trash. It's a, it's a great idea.
There are standard ways of doing it, but it does take some effort.
I know, I know. That's why I'm asking the question.
Wind up being more expensive than we say, or that we, than, you know.
Yeah.
And, and the other thing then there is, that means that, how do you determine, you know, what's the income level that you give a discount to? And then you have to figure out, okay, above this income level, we're going to be charging more. And you gotta figure that out, and you have to have, I mean, I think there's.
I know, it's, 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 it could be like opening up the most biggest can of worms ever.
Do you do it by assets? You have.
Yeah.
No, I get it. Assets that are in their kids' names now, and there's a whole.
I just, I feel like, I feel like there, there may be other ways to kind of slice and dice it, maybe. But I don't, I don't want it to be like this humongous project either, where it, where it becomes like a nightmare to implement and a nightmare to manage. But, you know, I'm looking at like the, the discrepancy between what we're potentially, what the proposal was to like. Increase our trash fees for this next year, for, for like a standard household, and then what it is for a senior. And I'm like, but I know there's lower income families that.
Right.
You know, that, so there are.
Argument last year was there's higher income seniors that can afford to pay it, and they're getting the discount because of their age and.
Yeah, yeah. There are different ways to generate the revenue that we need. So I had, um, recommended the fifteen percent for the, I call them regular people, and then the ten percent for, uh, seniors. And then a fifteen percent increase for the bag fee, but you could do twenty percent for the regular people and five percent for the seniors. Or there's so many different options to do, it's.
Brittany, one of the things that I was thinking about when I was looking at it was, um, you know, when we, when we purchase bags, right? I, I, you know, I actually do have it here somewhere.
Purchase them in bulk?
Like thirty, thirty-three cents, we don't, but cases, and we sell them at a little. My, my children do come to our house, they'll get bags, but they, they get them for free.
I'm the children now.
But, um, if, if we, um, you know, when we look at bags, because there's a, there's a cost associated with it, right? So every time I go out and buy a bag, some of it doesn't come back to the town. So it's like the thirty cents or thirty-three cents.
How much it is, how much it comes, actually comes back to town, it's in my.
This is the retailer keeps thirty-three.
So it's, it's, so that's a loss. So, you know, part of me wondered, if we're trying to make up a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, which is. You know, the number, right, that you were.
Um, for trash, I think it was.
That was the bag number, I think. Yeah, I know it was. It was, it was a hundred and sixteen dollars that would be.
Yeah, go ahead.
Or a hundred thou, yeah, it was a hundred thousand.
Was the re- revenue for the bags, okay, the additional revenue. So that comes to like nineteen dollars and change. If, across five thousand households. So at some point. You know, if I'm going to pay the additional thirty cents, forty cents for the bag, then I might be better off paying. Depending upon how many bags I'm buying, right, I might be better off paying an additional twenty dollars in the, in the flat rate. Or nineteen dollars. You know, and I just wondered, where's the?
Yeah, from, I mean, from a financial standpoint purely, a, the flat fee is just a more reliable and stable source of income. That's, that's my, that's my opinion.
Right, and that's why I was, part of it is.
It doesn't incentivize people to recycle and things like that, but just from a revenue standpoint, it's just a, it's a little bit more reliable.
And we are already incentivized to some degree. This would be an additional incentive, these, these raises. But I just wondered if maybe we should kind of look at what the tipping point is there in terms of, um, you know, if we. If we looked at just adding the additional twenty dollars to the flat rate, leaving the bag prices the way they are.
I would love to do that. I would love to just increase the flat rate.
And, but you've got to.
Should love it.
But, you know, if it is so, because if you figure if it's seventy-five bags and, you know, I, I can't remember. I did actually do it out in terms of how many, you know, um, at that increase. At what point does it, would it just be better off to take the twenty bucks and give it?
Right, to the flat, yeah.
I mean, I don't know.
Well, I'm, I'm interested in, and like I remember last year when, when Doug was here talking about the whole trash situation and. Um, one of the things that he was talking about, and correct me, because I don't know these things that well, but. I think there's like two components of, of the fees from waste management. There's like, I think like a tonnage. So there's like the amount of trash that people are throwing away, and then there's, I think it's like a tipping charge, or whatever it is to send out the, the trucks to the, to the.
So that's, that's like your hauling charge, and then what you're talking about in terms of the actual cost of disposing the rubbish, that's called a tipping fee.
Okay, alright, so I was sort of right.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'm curious, like, the, like, the, the less bags, does that mean that people are throwing away less trash? Because I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand what the behavior is.
Yes, so I had, I had a feeling that someone would ask that tonight, and I, I wasn't able to get the data in time. Um, that's where I'm not sure if people were hoarding the bags, but the tonnage had stayed the same.
Okay.
Or if tonnage has actually gone down.
Okay.
So I can request the information from waste management and, and see if the tonnage has gone down, if not, then.
Because, because I think that's going to also drive some of our decisions, because like when we raised both the flat fee and the bags last year. It, part of, like you said, it's like, it's, it's not, like, it's not a depend, the bag fee is not a dependable. So maybe people, like, I asked, I asked Sam today, last night actually, I sent her an email, I was going through all the trash stuff. I said, how many households do we have composting? Because ideally, not from a revenue standpoint, but like from a holistic, worldly perspective. I would love to be able to give every single household that composts, like, a discount on their trash fee.
Right.
Because that incentivizes people to do the right thing.
Yep.
Um, if, like, waste management would work with us and charge us less for the tonnage, or tipping fee, whatever it is. I would love to be able to do that. Obviously, that's, doesn't solve the revenue issue.
Yeah, we, we could look to see if, I, I don't know if it's, if we have this many less bags, what that correlates to in the tonnage, is it a dollar, dollar for a match? There's a bunch of different.
So, like, I asked Sam, I said, so how many households compost in Ashland today?
Through the Black Earth program.
Through Black Earth compared to a year ago, because when we raised the fee, like, did that incentivize people to, to.
Compost more.
Compost. And the number she gave me, so a year ago, it was two hundred and eight families in Ashland, and, um. Now we're at two ninety-two, which doesn't sound like a huge number jump, but when we're talking percentage, it's a big percentage.
Yeah.
So, like, I'm thinking, okay, you know, behavior might be shifting, you know, and Sam was talking about, oh, you know, I'd love to be able to. Offer grants and like all this other stuff, but there's other things that are kind of taking priority on those grants that we had offered through. Through, through the initial Black Earth.
I do want to note, but that's, that's just people compost through that program.
Correct. So I use less bags because I compost. We put out a bag every two weeks, so I don't hoard.
I'm not in that program, we've been composting for thirty years.
In your backyard.
Yeah, which there must, I would think a lot of people.
Sure there are other people that compost, I mean, I know people who compost in their backyard.
I'm just saying, I'd want that discount.
But Black Earth takes a lot more out of the, the food stream than, than, because you can put meat, you can put bones and dairy.
I know, but it's still a lot.
It's definitely like the way to, it's the way to do it, but it's like, you would have to have some verifiable, okay, here's my invoice from Black Earth. Ten dollars off of my trash.
Does the town get any revenue from Black Earth?
No.
So, so there's no savings?
No, I mean, what we were able to negotiate as part of a, a program, a pilot program, was a reduced rate for residents. To, to join and be a part of the Black Earth pro, program. But no, we don't get a financial.
To meet a certain number, and now we've met that amount, so it's at the lowest rate possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just, if we made some kind of money off of it, then.
Yeah, unfortunately we don't.
Nine hundred, nine hundred households between the combined community to, to, to lower the price more, and we're not there.
I thought, I thought it was just the five hundred was the mark.
No, so, but, you know, like, I'm wondering, like, would we be able to? I don't know, negotiate, I don't negotiate with, with waste management based on like the fees, like, that they charge for, for tonnage? Like, I, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out like ways that we can look at this and kind of have a better picture of what's going on.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think certainly when the contract comes up again, that's a part of the discussions that we can have. We did try to get, we did look at townwide composting as part of the last contract, and it's just prohibitively expensive. Um, you're talking about like the doubling of the costs.
Well, presume we're saving because they charge us less on the, the tonnage, right? I mean, the more we.
Yeah, but the hauling and the specialized disposal.
One other thing that I know that we kind of mentioned the last time around with this, and I would kind of like to take another look at it too. Is we had mentioned if we went to a, a, um, bi-weekly recycling, so it wasn't every week, you fill up the big bin, but every other week. Um, what, what that would translate into as far as possibly like stabilizing the, the.
That's a good.
The trash costs. And then, you know, obviously we'd want to like make sure, like, if we would make some sort of change like that, you know, maybe we do a survey out into the public and just say, hey. If we moved to every other week, on a scale of like, easy to excruciatingly painful, how bad would it be for you? And see what people, I don't know, like, I'm just trying to think of some creative ways that we may not be able to.
These new compost bins are very large. I think for most people, they could go to.
Recycle bins?
Yeah, yeah, so most people can go two weeks.
I think, you know, well, I think the trash contract's up in June thirtieth of twenty twenty-seven, so we'll probably start negotiating that in late twenty twenty-six. So that's certainly something we can bring up. I think what we want to be concerned, what we should be concerned about is that if. That is going to discourage people from recycling, and then they start putting more of their recycling into the waste stream. Which then we have to pay for, and end up paying more for. So like, if somebody fills up their recycling bin within week one. You know, at week two, what are they doing? Are they actually taking their recycling and putting it into?
Or is that information we can get from, um, the, you know, waste folks now is, is how much? You know, how much do people recycle so that?
We can.
Because then maybe we can figure out, well, how much room is there in your bin every week, you know? Is everybody's, most people's bin's full, or are they, most people have full or something?
I would think they're tracking on a week-to-week basis what they're hauling for us, right?
Yeah, it's usually the invoices are done on a monthly basis, and that's part of it.
But to do that, they're still tracking it week by week, what they're hauling. So I would expect we can get a report from them on a week-by-week basis as to what they're taking for recycle and what they're taking for trash.
We could ask a report.
At that and say, okay, through the month, it's consistent, or, I mean, I know for ourselves, sometimes either if we forget to put it out, or it's like, okay, we're busy, too busy, or whatever. We don't even put out the recycle, or we don't put out the trash, and then the next week, our recycle bin is a little bit fuller, but.
Yeah.
Maybe there are other people, or it would be good to see.
I have a teenager responsible for taking out the trash, so we occasionally miss it too.
I don't have that excuse, but.
Most family size, really.
Yes, I, I guess.
I think start times of the year too, come Christmas, and we all have Amazon being delivered to our house every day.
Yep.
Those boxes add up.
Just for Christmas?
Depends on what you know, you have somebody that cuts the boxes up into the. Right.
That is not me.
Boy.
Yes. As you would.
I step on them.
So I, I, I guess what I'm hearing, and maybe you are too, is that if we could have some kind of understanding of what our usage is from a trash perspective.
Yep, the ton, like the tonnage and see if, see how it affects the tonnage.
And how is that impacting us in the charging and stuff like that?
Yep, yeah, I'll see if the, since the bag revenue did go down quite a bit.
Yeah.
Yeah. See if it's impacting tonnage.
Maybe that's good. I think we all need to go to Claudia's house.
Yeah, if it's not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We did buy a lot ourselves, too.
Right, so two out of five, that's my, okay.
Alright, so, um-
Because for me personally, just, you know, like, when I saw the trash fee proposal, literally, I like, was like, yikes, because we just went to this like, you know, the, the, the two-payment thing, which is okay, except that the, the second trash fee, like, came at the exact same time excise tax, you know,
Just got them, yeah.
Came out, and, and it's, and I just paid my water bill, like, so it's, it's all kind of-
You're getting hit every, every, a lot.
Yeah, so it's not, I mean, I, I get it, from a revenue standpoint, we need to balance our budget, and we need to, to be able to pay for things like trash.
Twice a year was really just to give people a break, to not do it all at once. I wouldn't mind if it was all at once, just because it gives people longer to actually pay the bill.
Yeah.
Because it kind of trickles in.
I'm, I'm wondering then, based on what Brandy's saying, right, the, the second bill came around the same size as time as excise tax and what, you know, so, and it also looked like in your report that we hadn't gotten as much payment, like, we're not, our, our receivables are off based on the two-bill process?
Yeah, so the flat fee, I, I obviously don't really have a trend to look at.
Right.
And when I looked at the previous years, it took people about six months or seven months to, to pay the bill. The first three to four months, we collected everything.
Right.
But people know they have all year to pay, or they, they take a little bit longer.
Right.
So now that it's in two installments, I don't know if people are gonna pay now in July or August, which will throw off our cash flow now for that fiscal year, and I just, I don't have the data to, to look at.
So that might be something to check with the public, right? Okay, we did two bills because we increased the amount. Was that helpful or not? Or should we, even if we know we're gonna increase a little bit again this year, I'm expecting, does it make more sense to just keep it as one bill?
Yeah, it's-
Right, I mean, we can ask that question. Maybe that's a town manager.
Yeah.
Picked a month that hits?
Yeah.
I think it was, I think it was summertime, so. People usually are in a good mood in the summertime anyway, so.
That's usually, that's a good month.
I mean, I think people just look at the bill and pay it, I mean, they're not-
Yeah.
Right, right.
And it may be better to, yeah. Okay, anything else we need to cover at this time? Are we ready to move on?
I think we can move on if you want to, unless you want to just endure the-
Keep talking about, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're gonna discuss some more next meeting and potentially take action the meeting after, okay? Well, thank you, Brittany.
Thank you, Brittany.
Thanks.
Thank you, Dan. Thanks for hanging in there.
Alright, and so-
Thanks for the water.
Yes, thanks for the water.
Good night.
Alright, the next is the, uh, discuss the MBTA zoning, which I think we, we do have a date for the,
um, the fourteenth.
With the planning board is, uh, and what's the time on that?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty. We did, because a consultant's coming in later or something, alright. Joe, do you want to talk to us about it?
Yes.
I guess I shouldn't have asked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Actually, nothing has changed.
Yeah.
Uh, the figures are there, and-
The figures are, is it in our packet? I didn't see anything.
No, no, the figures are what we presented at our last-
Our last one, okay.
Are the same, they, they haven't changed much, you know, so, that, that's basically it.
Great, so thank you for that work. Questions or thoughts on that, um?
So, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I have not had a chance to either watch the forum or to review the information, so I'm hoping we'll, because we haven't been sent anything formally yet, right?
No.
Regarding that, okay.
But we will before, it's a week from tomorrow.
We will before Thursday?
I would hope so.
Okay.
Okay.
I would hope so.
And, um, yeah, and we did have a discussion of that not too long ago, I mean, I don't know.
Wrapping up some stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
Was that eight o'clock or eight-thirty?
Eight-thirty.
Eight-thirty.
So, but the public forum was great, like, I just wanted to, to, to thank you guys for putting, putting together a couple forums on this, because I think part of the, part of the issue is really educating people. Um, it's funny, I listened, just as an FYI, I listened to an NPR, um, broadcast, they were interviewing the person that was from Milton that was the head of the No For Ash, uh, No For Ashland, No For Milton.
Yep.
Um, and, you know, just as an FYI for anyone that, that is listening, um, the, the No For Milton folks had always intended to comply with MBTA communities, but it was the way that it was presented and put together, that was the issue, which is how it ended up a ballot issue.
So, the other thing, the other thing that I heard on, so I was on MAPC Winter Council today, and they were talking about housing and the MBTA zoning.
Yeah.
And someone from Milton was on it, and they said, the issue was not necessarily the housing, but the fact that we are being impacted by this, but the transportation, the trains that we're having to house for are not consistent, and they're not providing the transportation that our community needs. So people are still having to drive in from Milton, so you're requiring us to do this transit MBTA zoning because of the trains, but the trains do not provide-
Yeah, they have two really old, um, yeah.
Historic.
They're, they're like, we, that's what the person said.
You know what, you're on the, wah, wah, wah.
But I just wanted to put that out there, because I know some of the feedback that had, happened at the forum.
Yeah.
And in general, it's people-
But that's why they said no.
People are using it as sort of this rallying cry, like, oh, we should be like Milton, and we should say no. And it's like, well, it's actually, first of all, it's complicated, like everything else is.
Of course.
Um, but, you know, I just wanted to say thank you to all the work that you guys have been doing, because I think that what, from what I saw at your last forum, um, the proposal really has minimal, when I say minimal, like, zero additional impact from whatever has been currently built or currently permitted. And so the impact that we are, like, so, you know, being able to control what we can control, I think is there, and I think that the, that the public work that you guys have been doing has been great. So I just want to say thank you.
On behalf of Trish and Elle and Peter, you're welcome. It's a, it's, it's been an experience, and, um, you know, just waiting for UGC, to see what the heck's gonna happen with that piece of property, you know? We put it in, it's in, it's in the plan, but do we have to take it out?
Yeah, we, that's actually something I, I want to take a little bit of a closer look at, um, and, because if we're gonna change the density of that lot, I don't know if Peter brought this up, my concern up to you, but, um, at your last meeting, but, you know, if we increase the densi, the density outside of what is allowed in the development agreement, does that basically derail at the rail transit district, um, that UGC project?
Okay.
So that's something that I think we've got to be careful about.
The other, the other thing is, we got it, and, and some of us, not all of us, got an email from Mike Kane, um, after the ABA forum that happened, and he said, wha, if we're looking to create new housing and, and different things, let's try to work with the MBTA. He said, the parking lot at the MBTA could be a potential area for building, right? You put garage underneath, you do, so I, I think part of what we need to do is get creative with this as well.
Where did we end, well, I wasn't, I didn't see the forum, but I'm gonna try, where, is it on WACA? Like, you can just look it up? So I'm gonna try to look at it, but I always liked the idea of zoning around the tra, close to the train station, so that's not a bad idea.
The other, the other thing too is that, um, if people, um, aren't part of that rezoning district in, on the Pleasant Street area, they could always use the, uh, downtown overlay dis, uh, district as part of that, because that allows commercial building and housing.
And housing.
So, that's already there, so we don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Through special permit, right?
Through a special permit.
Correct.
Well, the zoning, though, the MBTA zoning has to be by right.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, alright, so-
And a certain acreage too, so if you don't have the acreage, that's, that's important.
Okay, well, thanks, Joe, and thanks to all the other folks. So, next Thursday-
You know, Michael, I'm thinking, maybe, um, in your newsletters, send a link to those two forums. They were very informative.
We did.
Did you?
I would do it again.
Again.
Yeah, put them out there, because they, they were very good forums, and people could fast-forward through any pieces and-
Yeah, just at, at this next meeting, we're gonna actually vote, right, and finalize this, or finalize it going to town meeting, right?
Yes.
I, I think they're gonna get a recommendation.
So we're gonna make a recommendation or clearance for that.
And then, and then the planning board probably has to hold a separate hearing anyway, because it's a by-law change.
Yeah.
So they would have to go through the whole town meeting.
Right, a zone, yeah, zoning by law.
Hearing process.
That's, yeah, I mean, you might-
They have that laid out, they have that laid out separately.
I mean, you may choose to push that to, um, you know, push this vote to the fall. I mean, that's a, a decision that, you know, you can certainly make as well.
I don't see, yeah.
Right, that's the, that's the other option.
What's that?
That it, if we can do it in the spring, and if for some reason it doesn't pass at spring town meeting, it would give us the opportunity to revisit it in the fall town meeting, to make it happen for December twenty-fourth.
I think we're in a good position to go for spring, yeah. Okay, alright, thank you. Um, the next item I have is discussing vote on determination of the useful life of the fire department town truck and authorize the clerk to sign on behalf of the board. So is there anything we need to discuss here?
Well, you have to re, have some, so, so typically, typically, uh, you know, fire trucks, you're only allowed to borrow over a period of five years, and so what this does is, would change that to be twenty years. It has to be done by a vote of the board, though.
And what is it?
But this is something we voted on li, two years ago at town meeting to purchase the truck.
Correct.
Have we not borrowed for it yet?
Um, it's under, no, we have not borrowed for it yet.
Okay.
It's still under construction. It takes about two years for them to, to be built.
So they're building a truck, and we haven't paid, we haven't paid anything on it yet?
Correct. We're good for it.
Well, they're, yeah, you think?
So by taking, by taking this vote, we'll then, uh, we'll do borrowing for it, but by allowing us to do this, we can borrow for twenty years.
For twenty years.
And so we increase the depreciation in effect.
Yeah.
And twenty years is a realistic time, I guess.
Twenty years is a very realistic time, right? And so you just need, well, it would be Joe, but you need to actually take a motion.
Okay, so I'm gonna read the-
Do we need to read the whole thing?
No, just that one little paragraph.
Hey, you can, you want to read this and make the motion?
Sure, I'll do it. Okay. I move that we authorize that the maximum useful life of the first ta, the fire tower truck to be financed with the proceeds of the one million four hundred and thirty-five thousand nine hundred and eight-dollar borrowing authorized by the vote of town meeting passed May fourth, twenty twenty-two, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, chapter forty-four, sub seven, uh, one, to be twenty years.
I'll second that.
And the motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion passes unanimously.
Great.
The clerk will sign it. Very good. Alright, um, okay, so believe it or not, we're just getting the town manager report.
Oh, yeah, I got a long list tonight.
I know, I see that you do.
So, um, so first, I'll, I'll start off with an update on the FY twenty-five budget. I, I don't have too much of an update, except I did have an opportunity to sit down with Superintendent Adams and just kind of talk about kind of the situation that we're facing with the deficit, and just kind of get a feel of where the school committee and the superintendent is on their budget, because they're also in negotiations at this point in time, um, with a number of their unions. And, uh, so it was a good discussion. They're planning on holding their, um, budget workshop, I believe, on the sixteenth. So they'll have more information after that, and then once we have that figure from them, we can really start working on whittling down that deficit. Um, so that's the update on FY twenty-five.
So if they're doing their budget workshop on March sixteenth, then you and Jim will work stuff out, and then we'll have a tri-board meeting to discuss and review, or?
I will suggest that we have a tri-board meeting.
Okay.
So, for sure. Um, but yeah, I mean, whether it's at a tri-board meeting, or whether you folks are reviewing it as individual boards and committees, we'll have a plan, you know, that we would put together for you to review. Um, the next item on the agenda is technology efficiencies. So if you recall, um, not too long ago, Paul Carpenter was able to secure a grant through the Community Compact Program for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay for a new permitting system. Now, this is gonna be a comprehensive permitting system that we're gonna be able to utilize across all different departments, so not just building, but also planning, health, um, even our liquor licenses and the licenses that happen out of our office, DPW, the clerk's office. So we'll be able to, um, to do that. We'll also be able to accept payments online as part of this, which is something that we've been looking to do to increase the convenience for, um, for people.
For permit paying.
For permits and stuff. Um, so we, uh, we've made a decision to go with a company called OpenGov, and, uh, you've probably, you might have seen advertisements for them around. They're certainly expanding and capturing market share here in Massachusetts. Um, but, um, we're in the process of working out an implementation plan with them, and that should be done and completed by July first. So, looking forward to that. And then also, um, we're looking at making some, uh, efficiency upgrades in our internal, internal technology, if you will, utilizing some of the HR mod, modules available in Munis. So one is a time and attendance model, uh, an employee, uh, I forgot what they call the second, do you remember what the second one is? It's some Tyler, content, Tyler Content Management, that's what it is. Um, so Catherine's been working with Paul and Munis on that, so, um, we're gonna be making, making some upgrades.
That was something that you reviewed during the budget workshop that Catherine talked about, so are we trying to implement it before the end of this year, because we have some funds to do that, or are you putting it into the budget for fiscal year twenty-five?
We'll put it into the budget for twenty-five, and it'll be an ongoing cost as well.
Right, I knew that, so, okay. So that'll have to be part of the budget, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
But it should save us, um, you know, if it doesn't save us dollars, it should make us a lot more efficient in terms of the usage, usage of our time.
Okay.
Um, so there's that. Uh, next is a comprehensive plan update. So first, I want to just, you know, let everybody know out there that there are three specific ways that you can provide input. Um, one is a survey, and another is a crowd map, uh, both of which you can find on the Envision Ashland website. It's part of, the, the website has a pretty extensive address. Uh, I did find, if you just Google Envision Ashland, it comes up as the first, uh, first one on Google. Um, so that should help you. Uh, we have our next meeting tomorrow, uh, tomorrow night.
It's at the library?
It is at the library, starting at seven PM, and we'll review kind of our community engagement process, or progress, I should say, to date. Um, and I know several of us have hosted meetings in a box and have been able to get some input, so it's pretty, uh, pretty, pretty good outreach effort. Um, also, so just moving on to the next one, the DEI update. So there has been a community survey that's been put out, um, and so we're continuing to advertise that. Um, in fact, tonight, I sent something out, or I scheduled something, um, that went out that had the survey link to both the comprehensive plan and the DEI survey, um, and both of those were in both, um, English and Portuguese, so-
Is that like via constant contact?
Via constant contact, so.
So, what would be good is at our next meeting, if you can go back and see-
How many?
How many, you know, what was the open rate and what was the click-through rate, so we can see potentially how many people are actually looking at it?
Yeah, we should, we should get the number of surveys completed and see if there's a, a spike-
Right, right.
That happens with that too. Um, so that's the DEI update. We also have, we have a meeting tomorrow, um, to go through that, um, to that work. So, next is an update on twenty twenty-four goals. Now, you know I have a spreadsheet that I, that I usually distribute. Um, it didn't get updated by everybody in time, so I will be able to send that to you. I'll, I'll send it to you in between these.
Maybe we'll have more time next meeting to go over it.
Yeah.
Well, and we can look at that as we're doing your review.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct.
So let's, we'll think about it as next meeting agenda.
So funny, Joe.
I, I, I think in April, when, I mean, as we're each doing our review of him, then, right, that first week in April, we're gonna be meeting with him, so.
And then I don't have too much on priority project update from the last meeting, so, um, except, uh, you know, the Upper Charles, well, I did give a pretty, pretty comprehensive overview of where we are with the last Upper Charles Trail group, so-
Yeah, we need to have another meeting, but, yeah.
Yeah, and so, uh, that's what I have for this evening. I think that's enough.
Yeah, yeah. So that gets us to- So, that gets us to board reports, so, we're starting the usual way, Claudia, if you're ready to go.
Uh, yeah, I don't have too much, I did attend, attend the planning board's MBTA forum, which was very informative, and recommend people take a look at those videos.
Thank you, Randy?
I also don't have very much, and I can't think of anything, because it's really late, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna take a pass on tonight.
Wow, okay.
Yeah, I know, I don't have anything else to say, I'm done.
Joe, go ahead.
She's got a whole sheet of stuff.
I have a whole sheet of stuff, yeah. Well, I forget, it wasn't there for the last meeting, so.
So, he's making up for lost time.
Real quick.
Okay.
Public safety, we met at the Public Safety Building with our roadway traffic safety committee on the twenty-seventh. A lot of items were discussed, as a matter of fact, I'll, I'll pass around the fact that Evan White was, spoke, had conversation with Mass DOT, and they plan on putting in two pedestrian crosswalk signs. AC, not solar, even though this is a solar-powered design, but on, on Codable Road, which is a state roadway.
Hello, yeah, I've been seeing the work.
Yeah, so, at some point, we're gonna need to accept that, those, those two signs, and at some point, we'll be responsible for the maintenance, I talked with Doug Small about that, and to run those two signs when needed, because it's, it's one of those push buttons that we have downtown. He says, like, about twelve cents a day, it averages out to twelve cents a day, he says, and I can cover that in my budget, so, that's not a real big deal. So, that would be, that would be suggested, but seeing it's not on the agenda, hopefully we can put it on the next one.
Yeah, let's, yeah, make sure you remind us. Yeah, make sure you remind us, Joe.
Well, she's going on a way vacation, she should be in bed by now, because she's traveling.
Oh, is she?
Yeah, right, yeah, absolutely.
Pulling all-nighter.
Joe, this is great work, I think we should put, spend some time on it.
Yeah, well, we, we can do that, and, and the other thing is too, I know, running real quick, Merrill Street by Winter Street, there's a gate, we have no idea who authorized that gate to be put up. I know that it was there, because, because of
When those houses went in.
When the houses went in, well, prior to the houses, when people were dumping trash and stuff in that area.
Yeah.
Then the houses went in, and it became like a crazy, you know, cut-through. But if we, to make that a one-way, and that would be people coming in from Framingham to utilize that and not coming out, because you got a blind spot there, so we're looking at that, and changing that around, and open up the gate for that. That would keep the traffic from, strobe a slant from.
So, maybe since you have something for us to vote, we invite the Roadset Traffic Safety Committee to our
Oh, be happy.
Either our next meeting or our first meeting in April, to just give us an update, and then also vote that?
Yeah, we, we can actually do that, that, that'd be great.
Make a note of who, make a note of that.
And tomorrow night, at five o'clock, the Affordable Housing Trust will be meeting, and again, I want to thank the board for supporting the Habitat for Society, for that affordable housing program. And lastly, my condolences to the families of Marie Oliveri and Beverly Kenny, very wonderful people who, starts, supporters of the Council on Aging, they're always there on activities and stuff, and I miss their smiling faces, and they're the only two that can still call me Joey. But, they're wonderful people, and lastly, Ben Montenegro, who was a stellar figure in Ashland for many, many years. His son Peter just passed away. He had a battle, he had a battle with cancer, eight years, and God bless him and his family. And I just want to send out my condolences to them all, we lost a lot of good people recently, so, keep them in your prayers and thoughts, and that's all I have, thank you.
Great, thank you, Joe.
I just jumped back in, I just wanted to mention that, and I meant to send you, Michael, a picture, but last week, I saw them working on some new crosswalks on one thirty-five, and they were out there risking their lives, painting, as I was coming out of one of the streets, and so I did take a little picture, and I just want to say it was, you know, great to see that work happening, and how much I appreciate the DPW and friends.
We're working on it, and hopefully, yeah, the sidewalk plans are still to go for it. And March tenth, pancake breakfast VFW with the Boy Scouts. Starts at eight o'clock.
March tenth?
March tenth.
That's a Sunday.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's typically when they do it.
And then clock for breakfast the next, the next week.
The next week, that's right.
Clock of pancake breakfast.
That's all right, thanks, Joe. Yolanda?
Okay, a couple, couple different things, first, on Tuesday, so, yesterday morning, we had the AB of ABA event. It was what they, they put it out as an update on Ashland projects, and it was Michael and Peter Magic and Beth Reynolds, Claudia was supposed to join us, we missed you, and I moderated, it was great. We got questions ahead of time, so we could prepare, and people that were here were very appreciative of the discussion, and it was, it was well, well-done, they, they filmed it, so it'll be available to watch as well. I, this morning, was on a call for MAPC, I'm the town representative to the MAPC, so this is their Winter Council Meeting via Zoom, you got a hundred-plus people on a Zoom meeting and voting different things, and a lot of the discussion was on housing and climate impact, and some of the stuff that our Sustainability Committee was talking about was brought into this discussion, so that was good. There's some bills either being passed or about to be passed to make permanent to-go drinks and outdoor dining, so that'll definitely be solidified before April first, because it runs out April first. And then, they've also done an extension again for Zoom meetings, I thought they were gonna make it permanent, but it's gonna be pushed out to four, one, twenty twenty-five. So, another year of, well, being able to Zoom, and I, someone commented that, why don't they just make it permanent? Because that's what we thought they were gonna be doing. Everyone, it's appreciative, it allows us, it allows people to sit in and watch our meetings, and not have to sit here and still participate, yep. Tomorrow morning is the Lion's Senior Breakfast, first Thursday of the month. On Saturday, the Garden Club is having a presentation at the library at ten AM. One of our members turned her backyard from just a grassy lawn into what is being touted as an Italian resort with bocce and gardens. And so, the presentation is tomorrow, you do have to register, I think you can do it through the Lions.
Not tomorrow, it's
I'm sorry, it's on Fri, it's on Saturday at ten AM at the library in person, should be a great event. And then, just, I'm gonna plug one more time, a weekend, there's one more weekend of Songs for Grownups at Hopkins Center for the Arts on Friday and Saturday night, but if you're interested, get your tickets soon. We sold out last Saturday, and they're expecting to sell out again.
That's great.
It was not quite sold out Friday, they had, they had some tickets, they had some tickets still available for Friday, but
Hopkins, Friday, Saturday night, right?
Friday and Saturday night at Hopkins Center for the Arts.
Wonderful. All right, thank you.
It was fun.
Just a few quick updates, I just wanted to note and thank Ashwinny Chidnavas, who resigned from the Finance Committee, so I think most of us know Ashwinny, or have seen her, so thank you, Ashwinny, for your efforts on that, and, you know, so she got a new, new job, so she's in good shape, I think. So, the MBTA reduced fare initiative, which I've talked about, is moving ahead, I think the board's gonna see it soon, and it's likely to be approved, and to go, the reminder, they're outsourcing their eligibility, and they're using some very basic, this goes to, I think, the thing you brought up. It's two-hundred percent of federal poverty level, which, so there's a lot of sources that certify that. One is like Mass Health Medicaid eligibility, and the big one they're using is SNAP benefits. So, if you're eligible for SNAP, you're eligible for this, so it's something to think about, and they're, they are, they are contracting with third parties to certify people's eligibility, but it's kind of a, hopefully, a simple process, so. So, it's something for us to think about, there are sources out there, where you don't have to yourself verify people's identity, income. And I, I did that OML training, I think, has everyone else done it now?
I'm scheduled for the twenty-sixth of March.
Very good, yeah, it's actually pretty enjoyable, it's like, we spent an hour and a half. One thing I, I did take away from it, in terms of meet, controlling meetings, they did say that, under the old meeting law, if someone's being disruptive, and this, and this had to do with physical disruption, the, you need to give people a clear warning that they're being disruptive and must stop, but if they don't, you can then eject them, either physically using a constable or via Zoom, so that's something to think about, if someone is really being disruptive, I give them, or the chair gives them a clear warning that, in my view, you're being disruptive and you need to stop, if they don't stop, that's, under open meeting law, you're allowed to do that, so I thought that was interesting. And I think that's all I had, so.
I actually have one other announcement, I'd be remiss if I didn't talk about this. Next Thursday, the fourteenth, the YMCA has their community breakfast at the Sheraton. It's a free event, it's an opportunity to go and meet their marathon runners, it's just a feel-good. They'll also gonna be, be giving an update on the YMCA that's coming here to Ashland, so, if you're interested, let me know, I can forward you the invitation, or it's probably on their website as well.
Thursday AM.
Thursday, seven to nine AM.
Next week.
Next week.
Oh, God.
Oh, we have not, next meeting, we need to do that.
Let's, let's put it on the agenda.
It's typically the Saturday before, yeah, but we have to vote it, so at our, our first meeting in April, we'll vote that.
Good point. So, let's put it on the agenda, right?
Oh, yeah, it's only the sixth of March, so our next meeting, I'm like, I'm, I'm about a month ahead of myself.
So, let's put, let's see, runner's breakfast.
Yeah, so we'll put it on the agenda for the twentieth.
Runner's breakfast, very good, all right.
My brain is slow right now.
Way ahead.
All right. Well, it's almost eleven o'clock, what is that, is that really almost eleven?
It's five o'clock, yeah, yeah.
All right, I will, all right.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good night, thank you all.
Good night, everybody.
Yeah, bye, Susan.
Have a good time.
Thanks.